City Council will be starting here momentarily, so it's the first of broadcasts, livestream that I've done. And I hope that you can get some information out of it. It's gonna be a pretty interesting discussion, and it's live, so whoever needs to be here, you know, stay tuned in. The C-SPAN, Freeport, I love it. Man, I got all kinds of folks preparing there.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the November 1st, 2021, City Freeport City Council meeting, regular meeting. The agenda has been posted, proper notices have been placed, and there is a form present. With that, we will proceed with the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Kelly, would you please raise your hand in the kitchen?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the November 1st, 2021, City Freeport City Council meeting, regular meeting. The agenda has been posted, proper notices have been placed, and there is a form present. With that, we will proceed with the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Kelly, would you please raise your hand in the kitchen?
Good Father, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this glorious day. We remember that we are your humble servants, and that we serve you. We ask that you bless this meeting, bless the city of Freeport, help us through all the challenges that lay before us, and do everything in accordance with your will. We ask that, through the name of your son, Jesus, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
Honorable Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, may we see it. At this figure time of our agenda, we have an opportunity for citizens to make comments. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, it has been posted, the public can remind us that there is a four-minute time limit, as approved by City Council on June 21st, 2010. This time, I would like ladies first, Mrs. McLeister.
May I put you there so I have some information?
Absolutely.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, my name is Heidi McLeister, and I live in 97 Dalton Lane in Bridge Harbor. I'd like to say that since I was last here, the residents of our neighborhood have noticed that we are now receiving police patrols during the day and night, and we're very happy to see that. I am here once again to talk about short-term rental ordinances that were presented to the council and then tabled. A question was asked if the owners of the properties had to be contacted about the ordinance. It appears to be the reason for tabling them. How are you going to determine which properties are short-term, and who knows where these properties are? My understanding, all ordinances go through public notification as required by state code, not through individual notices and property records. Of the 13 rentals in our neighborhood affected by this ordinance, only three live in Missouri County, and two live in our neighborhood, as shown in the Missouri County appraisal district. I would note that the majority of these hosts do not vote in Freeport. When people buy a home, they typically have an inspection made to find the problems with the issues in the property before purchasing. Hotels and motels have state codes and local ordinances that must be followed as well as safety inspections. Short-term rentals have no such safeguards. For the people who rent in this community, rental guests assume they are walking into a safe environment and deserve the same protection as they will get in a hotel or motel. Turning closets into bunk rooms, it becomes a fire hazard for the occupants. If here's the ordinances, you have addressed these issues and more, please reconsider and bring this to a vote in enacting these ordinances. There are about 20 families that reside in Bridge Harbor, the majority are seniors. During the summer, there are 13 short-term rentals in two streets. They are locally, three are locally owned and managed by the residents. The rest rely on the neighbors to manage their properties through calling the police to resolve their problems. In some cases, the owners ignore us, and they want us to manage their problems, their properties. That's not our job. When we built our home four years ago, we were told by neighbors that our area was ignored by Freeport. So as a group, we decided to change our voting habits to get representation. We live with water outages, power outages, and road closures, and that's why we live there. With two lift stations that constantly are overflowing. For the last year, we have lived with overcrowded homes with loud drunk individuals on a weekly basis. Councilor Penya, you have four Airbnb listings in Freeport, which appear to be the most listings of any single host in the area. I would like to communicate to you, compliment you on your efforts in renovating and bringing much-needed revitalization to the city. Your properties, as listed, meet most of the requirements in the proposed ordinances, but a utility ladder access to a bed room in an attic is questionable and does not meet any standards. The issues with these units and others in the area scream for a yearly inspection. As a member of the council, your request to table the ordinances at the October 18th meeting on the service appears to be self-serving and in conflict with your council service. A short-term rental ordinance is not to punish a host, but to protect the guest and the resident so they both can safely coexist. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Lorenzo Gomez?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Brooks, Senator Manu Kelty. City Council members, my name is Lorenzo Gomez. I live at 314 South Avenue C. I've been a proud citizen of Freeport for the past 50 years. I have worked as a bike welder in the nearby community plant for over 40 years. In 2016, I retired from the workforce to dedicate myself to my small family-owned business, Turner &amp; Thai Cafe, which I have owned and operated for the past 10 years. Since becoming a retiree, and with retirement checks being so little, the restaurant has been a great complement of income to make an experience for my family. I was forced to close down my building last year due to COVID-19. Couple months before, I was forced to close, I applied for a building permit to re-roof a small storage room next to my business, which took the inspector a few months to approve the permit. The building inspector at the time requested an architect blueprint, which I gave him. Then a few weeks later, I was told that I needed a survey for the property, which cost me $800, which I also complied with. I still haven't received the original survey documents for that storage room. After a few times, when I went to retrieve those documents, the building inspector's assistants told me that my grid strap was not compliant. He said above ground grid strap, which was approved by the city of Freeport to repurpose in the neighborhood, which has been in service for the past 10 years. The same building inspector's assistant had also given me a citation for having my commercial product designed my business, and another citation for neglecting premises, for having maintenance materials that I need for both my house and business. I'm currently paying off these tickets, which amount to $310 of community service. I have said all that to say this. I feel like I'm being harassed with this unnecessary duty. For example, parking on an unapproved surface. I believe the same building inspector's assistant was too aggressive, which to my knowledge, they have resigned. I feel like those tickets should have been dismissed. Not only that, but I feel that I should also be reimbursed for the 20 hours of community service I have done, and should have the remaining 21 hours dismissed that I will still report to you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
May I give straight deposit aside of my statement?
Certainly. Thank you, sir. Mr. Gomez, I will pass this out to City Council as I get to looking at it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Rosson?
Good evening, Councilman.
Good evening, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to talk about conflict of interest issues. What's the conflict of interest issues in the city of Freeport? That council members and board members on councils receiving taxable property moving off the tax road, and council members on purchasing. There's a conflict of interest somewhere in this. I got to talk to the county, also talk to the state. These things are supposed to be put in the public so the public can get it. We have nonprofits been looking at all the buildings downtown Freeport. Well, one of the buildings came off the tax road and Mr. Penya ended up with, the City Councilman. Every commercial building we have in this, in this city, or property that we have near the waterfront, a City Councilman owns it. Where's the conflict of interest? Also, I want to talk about the levies. I have my tax bill right here. That levy that, Mr. Kelty, you said that the citizens don't have to pay taxes on? Well, that was incorrect. Missouri County said that those levies with the owners build those things across, the taxpayers pay for those levies. I searched it with the state and the county. So the money that I've been paying for repairs on that levy, every deal like taxes like anybody else, the city owe me money. I want my money since the city decided to give the property away to another resident. So we need to work that out, because I did contact the Secretary of State and the Army Corps of Engineers, and they say that's impossible. You can't give away levies or sell them. So how did Freeport do this? Violate the rights of the citizens by giving away the levy? How that was possible? How is possible that council members are buying assets of the city, that there's a lot of nonprofits and businesses that are looking for these buildings to retain them, to bring them up? Also, I'm concerned about economic development members board. Spouses going on taking pictures of private property that don't belong to who they think they belong to, and causing these Freeport problems. Don't get drunk and angry and decide that you want to attack somebody. You're gonna do it, do it right out. Worschen concerns, that's what you guys are here for, the worschen concerns. I understand there's a lot that needs to be done in the city of Freeport, but we can't make Freeport look like no sister city. Freeport has been neglected for about, I'd say a little bit over 50, 60 years. So there's no way in the world Freeport gonna turn over overnight. That's impossible. Well, my father got a, my father got a letter from the Hispanic lady who's a parole enforcement officer, told him that he must paint his garage. Number one, a citizen don't have to paint nothing. Councils can't make laws that violate the constitutional rights of the citizens. They are property owners, they do not have to remove riot boards. That's their choice. You can ask them to do it, but to bind them to do it, it's illegal. Because you're making a law that's dictatorial, it's not a God of the March. My other comment too, is I watched my senator, junior senator of the state of Texas the other day. Grandfather fought in the world in the German War, my uncle fought in the Vietnam War, my other uncle fought in the Korean War. I fought against the storm. My cousin's fought in Afghanistan. But to sit there and watch Texas junior senators say it's okay for Naziism at a school board meeting, is slap every last black man or Hispanic person that served this country, and watching this happen. We watched this happen last year with our so-called event that we had in our river. But it all turns out to January 6th, it shows exactly what's going on. I didn't serve my country and watch this go down the drain.
Mr. Rosson, thumbs up, thank you, sir. Jose Montoya, please.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Jose Montoya. I've been in Freeport for over 35 years. In that time, I've been involved with different city park, school, church, city, mostly with the Freeport Soccer Club and the Medical Center. During that time, this time, mayors come and go, females, males, city councilmen, city women come and go. Some of you know me. I'm representing the Freeport Soccer Club, and I'm talking on behalf of them. It's a shame that we don't have soccer field appropriate to accommodate our kids. It's embarrassing for me to go to the county meetings and be offered to host tournaments, and I have to decline, because we don't have soccer fields. The facility that we have right now is in a very bad condition. Fields, restroom, and that's it. We don't have napkins. Oh, by the way, we don't have light. We have to cut practices and games, because it's too dark for them. So I've been talking with city councilmen and mayors and all. Every time I talk to, it's been promises, 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 empty, empty, empty. So I hope you do something about the sport. I hope you do something for the kid of Freeport. We losing kids going to different cities because our field sucks. We have kids going to Lake Jackson. But on the other hand, we have kids coming from Lake Jackson, Missouri, West Columbia, to play over here because they like how we handle things. But it's embarrassing for me to represent and tell them, ah, we don't have electrical power in our bathroom. Our field are in bad condition because we don't get help from the city. I know some of you don't know me, but some of you, you do. Like I was saying, I've been a lot of promises before, and it's embarrassing that nothing been done. I've been involved since 1990 with the Freeport Club, Freeport Soccer Club. First, we start by the community house on Second Street. They moved us by the high school. They kicked us out from there, and they put us there now. But nothing has been done just to give us a field that is in a bad condition. If you have kids, I know you do, I don't know you do, or you did, or grandkids, or maybe you can have your kids play somewhere else. But you represent the Freeport. I hope you do something about it. I represent the kid of Freeports. And I can pay for my grandkid to play anywhere else. But I want her to play over here, even though she lives in Angleton. So please, do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that's, we're through with the citizens' comments at this time, except for specific items that are coming up, so as we get to those specific items and numbers, sorry. So as we get to those specific item and numbers, I will call you up at that time. We'll go into presentation announcements, Mr. available, presentation reported, investigation report, please, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman.
Good evening.
As you know, as part of the Village Fund Investment Act, I'm in charge of presenting quarterly investment statements to you. These are the quarterly investment statements with a quarter that entered September 30, 2021. At that time, we have $25,299,709 for most of that, $19,900 plus being in the bank, and $5,302 being in the school.
You have any questions, sure, we'll see that.
No, sir.
Hearing that, I'll, thank you, ma'am. I will proceed to item number two on the agenda. Presentation by City Attorney on Investigation of Boys and Girls Club Property Purchase by Councilman Penya. At this time, I invite the Cole Morales out to speak first, and Mr. Garcia right after that, please. Mr. Cole?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman.
Good evening.
I guess I'll wait, I mean, I'll see what Mr. Duncan has to say. But one of the questions I have is, who did, did we get an independent person to do this investigation, or was it done internally? I bet you can't answer that, can you?
I have to address it in the, well, actually, it's not in citizens' comments. As I said, when the allegation was first brought up, we gave it to Mr. Duncan to proceed, to see if TML to do his own investigation, and cooperate with TML, and then go back and report to council.
Well, you didn't, you didn't get a third-party person to come, they have nothing?
That wasn't authorization. Authorization was from Mr. Duncan, and he verified with TML, which is the natural process. Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the City Council, Mr. Duncan, Mr. Kelty. My name is Sebrau Gattie, I live in 1924 North Avenue G in Freeport, and I am the president of the Freeport Economic Development Corporation. And I'm here because it is felt that the City Council should have appointed an independent investigation into this, particularly since Mr. Penya is a member of the City Council and of the Board of Directors of EDC, and indirectly is the boss of Mr. Duncan, and on both counts, as a City Councilperson and as a member of the Board of Directors. I really urge the Council to reconsider and appoint an independent investigation into this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. I would like to say, in response, is that we've had this out there for quite a while, and this is the first time I'm hearing for an independent person to come and review this. But once again, I believe the council has followed policy, as well as built suspenders with the Texas Initiative League, which is the overall group that checks the homework of all city attorneys and city councils. So with that, Mr. Duncan, would you present your?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Council, Mr. Duncan, Mr. Felty. My name is Sebrau Gattia. I live in nineteen twenty-four North Avenue, Eugene, in Freeport. And I am the president of the Freeport Economic Development Corporation. And I'm here because it is felt that the city council should have appointed a independent investigation into this, particularly since Mr. Pena is a member of the city council and of the board of directors of EDC and indirectly is the boss of Mr. Duncan in both counts, as a city council person and as a member of the board of directors. So really urge the council to reconsider and appoint an independent investigation into this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. But I would like to say in response is that we've had this out there for quite a while and this is the first time I'm hearing for an independent, uh, uh, person to come and review this. But once again, I believe the council has followed policy as well as built suspenders with the Texas Municipal League, which is the overall group that checks the homework of all city attorneys and city councils. So with that, Mr. Duncan, would you present your report, please, sir?
Thank you. First, I'd like to point out because due to the citizen comments, as, as the city attorney, I don't represent any individual city council members. So, um, if the city council member has a legal, personal legal question or legal problem, I am not their attorney. I'm the attorney for the city, city council as a whole. So the majority of the city council, majority vote of the city council, uh, gives me direction, not individual, uh, city council members. And, uh, so I'd, I'd like to go through, there's allegation, not even really allegation, there's a question brought up in citizen comments a few months back that the city council should look into a transaction regarding the purchase of the Boys and Girls Club at two oh two West First Street. And, uh, so in investigating that, the mayor at that meeting announced that he would like for me to look into that, review the facts, review it with the attorneys at TML. Texas Municipal League is a statewide organization that provides, uh, legal counsel, uh, for all the cities in the, in the city, in the state of Texas. So that, uh, each city has insurance through the TML. So in certain cases where there's insurance coverage, uh, they provide attorneys to defend cases. In addition, they have attorneys that you can consult, all cities can consult with them to get their legal opinions and review, uh, legal situations to get their, uh, input and their counseling. In the, uh, the course of this investigation, I, um, included several, uh, sources to try to figure out what, what happened and what the facts were. I spoke with the EDC board members that were on the board at the time of this transaction. I reviewed over five hundred, uh, emails, confidentially emailed documents with a specific developer that was looking to develop a project in the city of Freeport. Reviewed the Bressoria County property records. I spoke with the, uh, executive director and members of the Boys and Girls Club Association. Uh, talked to, um, surrounding property owners, including the, uh, the trustee for the Western Seafood Company property that's on the river down in that area. I spoke with the bond counsel, uh, for the Gracewell Law Firm that was, uh, apparently working with this proposed developer to issue debt to try to help them do the development. I made a couple of, uh, I reached out to Maryelle Music a couple of times. She's the person in citizen comments that brought up the issue and asked if we investigated. I contacted her a couple of times requesting for any additional details or specifics that she may know. And she did not reply to any of my requests for information. I looked at, there are written communications between the purchaser and the Girls and Boys Club, uh, emails and dated, uh, documents that I could look at to see how that transaction unfolded. Uh, once again, I talked to adjacent property owners and, uh, reviewed everything with the Texas Municipal League attorneys. So the pet issue was that, um, back in February of two thousand twenty, there was a developer, and I call, I'll, the, when a developer comes and they have some interest in doing the development, especially through the EDC, usually they request that those communications be confidential because, uh, for example, if you're looking to, uh, do development, you may not want the public to know until everything is ready to proceed. So this developer that I will call CE, um, approached the Freeport EDC about, uh, bringing a business, their headquarters and some other business to the city of Freeport. Uh, they met with, uh, our executive director, Mr. Holman, at the time. And in February, they were interested, interested in purchasing the property at two oh three Second Street, which is across the street from the, um, city hall on Second Street, uh, the buildings that were demolished, uh, across the street there. I think that, uh, at that time, the original price, asking price for that roughly half a block was around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. After, uh, the EDC had talked to the owners and talked to them a little bit about the details, unfortunately, the price doubled to about three hundred thousand. But the developer, given the price range and the increase in price of the developers, that they were not interested in buying that property. Their plan was to buy a, um, that property, build a headquarters that would house a little over sixty employees that they had working in California. They were gonna transfer them from California here to the city of Freeport. When that, uh, fell through, then in March of two thousand twenty, uh, they were interested in, uh, purchasing property on Fourth Street and Cherry. There were three different property owners that owned that property. Mr. Holman had talked to them and was trying to help negotiate a purchase for them to buy that property and, and demolish the existing buildings and build their headquarters there. One of the property owners, uh, and she was not interested in, in selling that property. And so, um, that opportunity did not fall, uh, did not come to fruition. In April of two thousand twenty, uh, this developer brought in a new partner, a new person interested from New York City. This gentleman, um, indicated that, uh, they were interested in buying the whole downtown of Freeport, uh, which would be all of Park Street, uh, all of, uh, I'd say from Park Street to Cherry Street, uh, both, uh, between Second and Fourth Street. In addition to the property in front of the, uh, Marina, indicated they wanted to buy the whole downtown, uh, tear down all the buildings and rebuild the whole downtown part of Freeport. It didn't seem very, uh, reasonable or practical. You have that many people downtown that would willingly sell all their property and let them, um, all the historic downtown. Came to the attention, uh, that of the EDC is that the, these developers actually didn't, in all of their deals, they didn't want to put down any money. They, uh, all of their plans included trying to get federal grants, uh, special loans, issuing, asking the EDC to issue bonds to pay for all of their projects. And the, uh, as a matter of fact, the, the gentleman from New York said, well, he wanted to build a hotel in downtown Freeport and he never built a hotel less than ten stories. So we had to change our zoning to, so we could have ten-story tall, uh, hotel. However, the hotel group that he was gonna get to pay for all of this said the market in downtown Freeport would support the ten-story hotel. So, um, uh, had in June of two thousand twenty, um, in my conversation with the folks at the Boys and Girls Club, uh, I was informed that in June of two thousand twenty, when the, when this developer was still looking at buying the downtown and tearing it down and building tall building, New York style buildings in downtown Freeport, um, that, uh, one of, uh, Mr. Pena's tenants, Councilman Pena's tenants, that worked for the Girls and Boys Club, mentioned that the Girls and Boys Club building on Second Street, uh, was uninhabited and the Girls, Boys and Girls Club was interested in selling that property. I reviewed the, uh, I spoke to the Boys and Girls Club director about that. She sent me, uh, the emails, uh, dated from those dates, uh, and also corroborated that yes, that's how, uh, the transaction began with a conversation from her employee, direct lead to Councilman Pena. Now, the allegation, uh, there was not a direct allegation, but the inference from, uh, from the citizen that wanted us to look into that is that somehow Mr. Pena used his position on the EDC to find out about this property being for sale and, uh, that this property, he would purchase this property then to, uh, because he knew there was a development going on at that property and then he would resell it to the developer and make a big profit, is the, I guess, the, the allegation. But in fact, uh, this opportunity with regard to this building had nothing to do with the EDC. In June of two thousand twenty, this developer was not looking at that building. As a matter of fact, in my investigation, they never were looking at purchasing that building. And so that part of the allegation is, did he get this information, uh, through his, uh, membership on the EDC board about this, uh, Boys and Girls Club? Through the EDC is not true. And any person or any independent investigator can read the emails and, 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 and see very clearly, uh, where that conversation began back in June of two thousand twenty. Now, subsequent to that, um, after the, uh, the, um, developer asked the EDC to pay for a hotel study to see if a ten-story hotel would fit in downtown Freeport and also asked the EDC to pay for a downtown revitalized, revitalization study, um, although the EDC had previously said that they didn't want to pay for studies, they would like to do more proactive, uh, measures. So after that, uh, the EDC decided they would not pay for a hotel study. Then the developer moved their attention to the property owned by the EDC, um, part of the old Western Seafood property that the EDC calls that eight-point-eight acres. And it's on the Old Rises River, beginning at Oak Street and extending, I think, to Maple Street. So this developer was looking at developing that property and also, uh, three hundred acres in the city of Freeport ETJ over by five twenty-three and, uh, two thousand and four over on the north side of Angleton. Once again, those projects, the, the developer wanted the EDC to give them the property and everything was contingent upon the developer being able to either get loans or get other corporations to come in to provide the funds. The developer was not, uh, producing any funds as any, as part of that deal. In, uh, September of two thousand twenty, the developer informed the, the EDC and informed Mr. Holman that they had applied for bank loans, they tried to get some mortgaging to develop the EDC property, but they were turned down and they were unable to get any financing. Approximately three to four weeks after that, when the developer says, hey, we can't get money, we're out, um, that is the time that the, uh, the corporation of which Mr. Pena owns, uh, an interest in the corporation, not Mr. Pena directly, but corporation that he owns, interested, signed the contract with the Girls and Boys Club to buy the Girls and Boys Club building. And keep in mind, at this time, the only target of the developer was the EDC eight-point-eight acres and they just said they had no financing, they can't do the deal. The next month in November of two thousand twenty, um, the executive director, Mr. Holman, uh, had talked to the developer and indicated that the EDC had the legal ability to issue bonds, municipal type bonds. And, uh, the developer said, well, they want the EDC to issue three hundred million dollars of bond to develop a, their development in Freeport, outside of Freeport and in the San Marcos area. Since they indicated they wanted so much money, then, uh, Mr. Mr. Holman actually sent them a map and asked them to expand their, um, plan of development, not to just include, not just the EDC property, but also the other waterfront property owned by Berens Marine and owned by Western Seafood and then extending to the Walker Royal property in front of the Marina. And actually, Mr. Holman emailed and sent the developer a map of these properties highlighted in November of two thousand twenty. Now, that map did not include the Girls and Boys Club. And in fact, Mr. Holman indicated that since that prop, the Girls and Boys Club is next door to the county office building, then clearly the county would not be interested in selling the building, so it was not feasible, uh, to include, uh, the Girls and Boys Club as part of his proposed development that he was trying to get the developer interested in. The purchase for the Girls and Boys Club went through. The last contact with the developer was in May of two thousand twenty-one. At that time, the developer indicated that they, uh, wanted the, the EDC to issue three hundred million dollars of bonds, give the, give them eight, their eight-point acres, find ten acres somewhere within the city of limits of Freeport for them to do another project and also find another parcel of one thousand acres, uh, for them to do it in another project. And the indication from the developer to Mr. Holman was if they could not provide that thousand acres in the city of Freeport, which I don't think the city of Freeport has a thousand acres, uh, ten acres, and then also agreed to give the eight-point acres, that they would be out and they would not develop in the city of Freeport. And so that was their last, I guess, requirement email from the developer and after that, they have not, um, communicated any further. And, uh, the, uh, the three hundred million dollar bond was supposed to include the development they wanted to do in San Marcos. And I spoke with the, uh, bond counsel, the attorneys for the city of Freeport that handled bonds and, uh, he had not heard anything further. He feels like whatever deal they had going on in San Marcos, uh, must have fallen through also. So, um, the final conclusion is that, number one, uh, Mr. Pena's interest in the Girls and Boys Club had nothing to do with his, um, uh, membership on the EDC. In fact, uh, at the time that he discovered this information directly from the Girls and Boys Club, uh, the developer was looking at different property. And then finally, that whenever the contract was signed, it was after the developer had communicated to the EDC that they could not get financing and they were not interested in doing any deals in the city of Freeport. So, um, that's the, uh, that's my conclusion. And, uh, like I said, I had, I forwarded documents, especially the key documents about the, the, you know, communications between Mr. Pena and the Girls and Boys Club and also the documents with the, um, uh, developer and, um, talked to the folks at TML, asked if there's any legal violation or ethical violation that they could, uh, point to with regard to, uh, the actions of, uh, Mr. Pena for purchasing this building. And they said that they saw nothing and had no concerns. That's all I have. Mayor, unless the council has a question?
Uh, I have a question, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
So Mr. Duncan, assuming that Amber Newman is a director to this interview or talked to or this conversation with?
That's correct.
Okay. And anytime in those conversations, did Ms. Newman mention, uh, trading that building to the city to move in to, uh, with, uh, to move into our current symbol or if we required a land for BISD for them to team up and move in with us because our building was uninhabitable?
No, she didn't mention anything without hanging it.
She never mentioned that?
No.
Okay.
Last question, sir.
Mr. Kane? Council, do you have a question or a comment on the report?
I, I would like to say when we're, uh, in our conversation, because I asked Ms. Newman about, uh, the sale and they said that they, uh, they had a, they had their, they have a boards, Girls and Boys Club has a board of directors, um, like other organizations. And that they had a discussion of what would be the, uh, uh, the asking price or the sales price for the building. Uh, and they came to an agreement of what that price would be and, uh, that's the, that's the, uh, amount that, uh, the corporation, that Mr. Pena had interest in paid. There was no negotiation or bargaining, it was just paid their asking price. And then that, that transaction was voted and approved by their board of directors.
Does that change anybody's position in regards to questions? Mr. Duncan, does that finalize your report?
Yes, ma'am.
Ladies and gentlemen, council has seen this report. However, I will suggest to each and all citizens that makes open record report, report. Man, I'll get to it in just one second and certainly get a copy of this for everybody's review and so forth. Is that your question, man? All right, why don't you come up? Real quick.
Mayor? Can I still have a chance?
You still wanna make a comment?
I can.
Okay. Kinda go ahead.
As the CEO of NSCI and CPE, and I put my signature on the checks when I pay the different corporations, we have a board executive meeting and we have to come up with a resolution. And as a CEO of my company that I own, we have our resolution. So the resolution should stay on how the purchase is information. Are you a licensed investigator? That's to the city attorney. I, I have to say this because you can't go by and say that.
Mr. Rosen, if you can go ahead and, uh, don't ask the same question as you made.
Yeah, the, the question- Yeah, the, the question is, if he's a licensed investigator, I can accept that. But by him being the city attorney, there's a conflict of interest in that. It is, it's an appearance of conflict of interest, just like the appearance of conflict of interest with Mr. Pena behind the building. It's still an appearance of conflict of interest. And a resolution should have been sent from his corporation to get this stuff taken care of and that you know everything about.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I have one.
Would please set up a form.
Yes.
When you get through, sure.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Pam Mancy, Front Street. Um, I just have a question. I mean, you'd mentioned that there wasn't anything ethical wrong with his transaction and so forth. But I'm thinking, you know, if, if I'm a board member and if I've been talking to someone, they're saying, hey, man, I think I'm gonna sell this property, you know, this corporation, Boys and Girls Club. And if I'm a member on the city council, I'm kinda like, well, maybe this is gonna look weird like I'm getting this property really cheap or something. I probably need to bring this up, you know, to the board and let people know that it's up for sale. That's just my thought. Because now we've got this thing going on about Mr. Councilmember Pena. And, you know, people don't even know the price, or it just sounds like to me, you know, you know, hell, I might have lost you, Steve. I'm sorry. I might not, I might have wanted to buy that property. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, would you please set up a form?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Pena, let's make it brief, please, sir.
I have, uh, his invisible black eyesight, I guess. Beware being the agent of change, that I would say. Because you get, you get it from all corners when you do. Let me just say, we'll touch on that later, but, and I appreciate you offering me this opportunity to speak on my behalf here. It's not something fun that I enjoy doing, but it seems to be a recurring theme through my tenure of volunteering since I've become resident here in Freeport. And I also appreciate you maintaining the decorum that the forum that we sit in tonight. I'm a councilman, but I ask you to continue giving that time. The problem with citizen comments, I want to say, is that you become the subject of retaliatory attacks. I would like to be sure that we create, that the council creates a process that requires a set of processes and requirements of evidence before the city takes on any future investigations. Because otherwise, we risk what has happened tonight. An unfair and meritless accusation with petty political attacks, with petty political attacks that only seek to discredit and harm public perception of the accused. These, these accusations actually gain perceived credibility simply by being accused. Now, all of a sudden, you guys think, oh, Pena, you know, he's there. Simply because I was accused. Well, I could stand up here tonight and without any evidence accuse Councilman Mariah and accuse Councilman Brimich and accuse Mr. Kelsey even.
Happens every day.
Councilman Brimich, pardon?
Happens every day.
Correct. So to come from the charge, however, I'm thinking, we need to clean this up. We need to keep, we need to really kinda help clean, clean it up so we can help our perception going forward. Because otherwise, this back-and-forth pending this, I'm not going to engage you, but I, I have a solution. Unless you have a process. So, on that note, and this might be to, uh, the point that others were making here at the latter part of the commentary, is that I'm having to create an ordinance. And I've said this because when I actually firstly volunteered, actually, I got volunteered and selected to be on the EDC. My very first meeting at the EDC, but being on this board does not just allow me to buy properties and invest in what I think is a great city. And they, I was simply told, and Mr. Raseel was there too, my very first meeting, that all you have to do is recuse yourself. But I will say this, I'm having to create an ordinance, and I would recommend that you look at this going forward, that requires disclosure by all council members and all board members in the city to disclose all of their assets and holdings. Let's get it all out. And let's see the contracts also that they have privately and those that they have with the city. I wonder how comfortable everybody would be with that, because I am. I really am. And this transaction, I want to let you know, was a private transaction. The Boys and Girls Club was a private entity that was under no obligation to list their property with a, with a listing agent, with a realtor, with a rent claimant, with anybody. They could sell it however they wanted. And they, they did their own internal, uh, checks and lists of the people they wanted to sell to, um, and I paid the highest price. And that goes with the other property that was bought earlier on Broad Street by Mr. Rollerson. That was actually at an auction. And I actually paid the highest price at an auction. It was a publicly disclosed auction. Could be attended by whoever from our county and surrounding counties or from out of state or out of county. You just had to register. And if you understand that process, then you know that I went through the front door. No side door action, no mischief. So if you want to believe that there is some sordidness to these transactions, that's unfortunate, because that's what happens when you're, you get falsely accused and, and then the right is still on your side. So I hope that going forward, you guys will all afford me, um, this, um, the credibility that I, that I came with when I first started this business. And it being a volunteer. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Pena. Next, we're gonna go into the consent agenda. Consent agenda items denied or pre-qualified, considered to be routine in nature, may be acted upon in one motion. Number three is consideration of possible action on approval of city council meeting minutes from October eighteen, twenty twenty-one. Consideration for road closure for St. Mary's, St. Margaret's Church for the solidarity. Ah, I always gotta work on that word. Come on, you Catholics, what is it? What?
Salamity.
Salamity, salamity, okay, there you go. Salamity of Christ became procession. And number five, consideration of possible action proving. Resolution number twenty-two-one dash two-seven-one-five lifted an emergency declaration in regards to hurricane, thereby weakening my power, is mayor.
Mayor reviewed it and I'll make the motion that we approve.
There you have it. Now, we have a motion to approve on items three, four, and five. Is there a second?
I have a second.
There are a second, Council Kane, is, uh, therefore no comments are needed. All those, the fairies say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried and answered, thank you. Now, we're gonna go into council business regular session. Item number six, consideration of possible action of the annual streets contract and listing of streets for the interlocal agreement, Resort County for twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-two. Mr. Petty, will you approve this voting, please?
Yes, sir, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Uh, consideration of approval of streets for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, interlocal agreement for Resort County for repaying. Staff recommends council authorize the execution of the contract with Resort County and list the streets for that twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two asphalt agreement with Resort County. This request is for approval of the contract and list the streets for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two agreement. At the last city council meeting, staff recommended to list the streets for the total estimated cost of three hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-three cents. This cost is a material only cost for the street reconstruction being completed through the interlocal agreement with Resort County. This list included the total miles to be completed for fiscal year of one point nine-nine miles. The one point nine-nine miles of streets identified for this fiscal year is requested after careful review and consideration of both the condition and volume of traffic carried by each street in the city. Based on these factors, these streets were considered at highest priority. Under the contract, the city is limited to two miles of streets per year that the county is willing to assist us in repaying. After presentation at the last city council meeting, council was requested to submit any additional streets they desire to be considered. We, we requested that speak, that, uh, requests be submitted to the city manager ahead of time so that measurements could be made and cost estimates be established for any alternative streets. As of this, as of tonight, Councilman Mariah has submitted four streets. Of those streets, one was concrete, so only three asphalt street requests have been included for discussion. Any decision by council to add roads to the original list will necessitate the removal of an equal amount of linear figure roads from the original list of two miles. In your attachments, you will see that the original list is there in the top that we submitted at the last meeting and still have on, on the board today. Uh, in the bottom, you'll see Councilman Mariah's list of roads. Now, we did get a list from Mr. Pena a little later. Uh, I did go out and get measurements on those roads today as the cost estimates associated with those roads as well. If you'll notice in your packet, also, we attached the, uh, phase one and phase two of the concrete road reconstruction so you can see where the roads are being repaired and what wars and, uh, funds associated with those as well.
Mr. Petty, in regards to the streets that, uh, that y'all have already identified and measured, or there are two streets on there that we're actually gonna receive some grant money or some money on?
That is the Ryan Beach Road and the God Course, uh, Maplewood Road. And those two roads, we tried to push the county to try to get them done before the end of the year because we had to pile any station of the thing.
All right, very good. Council questions for Mr. Petty?
Uh, I don't have, uh, I guess, questions, but I, I did notice, I guess, a unfair balance. Uh, I do feel like some of my streets are in pretty bad condition and, uh, the, the streets that I named. But I did, did, I do wanna, I, I added up all the, the total square footage of every ward and I do want to say it here in public. And Ward A only received twenty thousand square feet last fall. Ward B, uh, sixteen thousand. And I, I, I'd say that Ward C is up in the top with thirty-seven, uh, thousand two hundred and thirty-six square feet. And Ward D was, was the highest with a hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and twenty-two square feet. And I, I do feel like, uh, it's, 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 uh, not a fair balance. Or I would like to see a little bit more, uh, done in my ward. I'm not sure what the other council members have, but I do think that, uh, the streets that I listed are a priority. And, uh, I had submitted those streets actually last year for consideration and they didn't make it. Uh, I do wonder why, uh, I wasn't, you know, asked, you know, or told, or told, or told,
Whoa, thank you.
That they couldn't be on this year's. Uh, I would appreciate a little bit better communication by the city manager. That's it.
I thought we were one city, Mayor. I didn't know that we were, uh, my, 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 mine. I, I, I thought that we hired professionals to go out and identify the issues in the city. And this is our city. It's not my city, it's not Mario's city, it's not your city. This is our city. And if the roads need the attention and we hired this man to do a job, he identifies them. It's not because we don't like Mario, it's because the roads are in need of repair. So, if, you know, increase your budget, Mario. You don't take away from something that's broke to fix something in your ward. You increase the money, ask for more money.
One, one other thing, Mario, uh, just a hundred.
It's the vision, Ford, man.
This is just asphalt. Okay, so remember we're here, get around to the next year's concrete streets. You may see that there's more in your ward than, than my ward or Mr. Pena's ward. But ultimately, I, I have to agree, uh, that this is what's best for the city.
No, I, I agree, uh, at a hundred. You know, yeah, Troy, you, you write about a few things, but I've also noticed a lot of, uh, political undergivings and, uh, you know, it's kind of like.
It's putting yourself in political.
Hey, look, hey, look, man, I'm talking, I got the floor. I expect you to respect what I say.
I ain't playing.
No, but I'm speaking. I'm speaking and it's just, uh,
Go ahead, Mitch.
For example, uh, the streets that are being worked on today, uh, the current asphalt streets, they're not being, uh, on my ward, they're, they're the last ones, I believe. The, the county hasn't done much.
The, uh.
But hold on a sec, uh, I do feel like the numbers are pretty, I mean, if, if those, if those streets on Ward D were priority, why weren't they a big priority last year?
Asphalt, you say?
Yeah, 'cause once some of this stuff was also put in by Mr. H before Mr. Brimich was on the council.
Thanks, I submit any to you?
No, sir.
I, well, we're also making sure clearly recorded, I submit any speaks to you?
No, sir.
Thank you. I'm, 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 I'm super tired, Mayor, of this division. And, and he owes me an explanation of politi- political, what, what, what's that word you learn? Political what?
I'm, I was fixing, I said.
Thank you.
If you'd stop interrupting.
Okay. I'll let you have it.
Can I address the, can I address the county roads and asphalt?
No, no, I'm gonna do that.
It's senior.
Hold on, let me do that. Councilman Mariah, what do you mean by political underpinnings?
Uh, i- i- it is what, what, what it meant, uh, to be, uh, what the meaning is. But, uh, I do feel, uh, that there, that there is a constant pressure or that there's not enough being done, uh, to meet the needs that I had to have spoken, uh, and, uh.
And then if you're, and I'm sorry, just.
Go ahead.
If, if you're talking about the county, which is what Mr. Petty wanted, uh, to talk about, we have, uh, not a whole lot of control of what streets they start on and what streets they don't start on. There's no political underpinnings on that whatsoever.
But, but.
Hold on one second, you, go, Troy, to stop interrupting, you, you, okay. The county pulled the folks off that are working on our streets, didn't took them to. All right, and they need to stay in Freeport. I'm gonna call Dupan about that. But I don't see how you can say that's political undermining.
But.
And they make, hold on, and make ambiguous accusations because that is the problem that disintegrates the unity of this council and prevents us from moving forward. So be specific. What specific underpinning are you talking about?
There could be better communication with the county as to, uh, address certain issues that I addressed with Mr. Kelty.
Have you called Dupan?
No, sir. But I have, I have told that, uh, Mr. Kelty called Mr. Payne, uh, before and ordered contact the county to address those issues.
I'm sorry, sir.
Uh, that's, uh, Mr. Kelty's job.
It is Mr. Kelty's job, it's also your job, it's my job, it's his job, it's his job, it's his job to represent those folks. And so if you have a specific question that's outside of the realm of the city's control, which once again, the only control we have with the county is the designation of what roads we use, call Commissioner Payne.
Yes, sir, and I called his office and I called, and I was in contact with Superintendent Joe Alvarado. And, uh, it did seem like there was a loose communication between the city and, uh, the county.
And that's your interpretation?
Yes, sir. Uh, I did call him and that was, uh.
So you did call Mr. Payne, though?
No, sir, I put, I gave a hold of him.
All right, very good. Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Council, you have anything else?
I'd like to make a comment. Just some simple math. Ward A's got ten percent, Ward B's at eight percent, Ward C's at twenty percent, Ward D's at sixty percent. As a practical matter, it seems like it makes more sense to have a balanced approach going forward. I'm not so sure that we're under the gun here tonight such that we can't try to evaluate whether or not a balanced approach can be achieved.
We are under the gun in regards to getting this out there so we can get our list to the county so they can give us, you know, to get our proper place in line. So yes, we are under the gun. That's why, that's why he was asking for folks to submit. So I guess my question.
Well, I have a second question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
The second question was, I did, uh, meet with, um, Mr. Kelty to go over, uh, street needs, repairs that were, um, plaguing Ward A. And you mentioned that those were brought in late? I think it was still in time. My question is, are those included in their cell, or are they?
Yes, I got it on the sheet right here, I'll fix and go over it.
And are they part of that ten percent for Ward A right now?
No, they're included, they're not included.
They're not included.
The top part of the list that Mr. Petty has presented to us, gentlemen, it's in darker gray, those are the roads that we have reviewed before and that we've actually approved before by talking about these things and sending Mr. Petty out, uh, to take a look at those. The lighter colored gray that Councilman Mariah has, uh, the three streets, I understand, are poured on the concrete, the eastern three asphalt streets. And then the streets that, or alleys that you have, Mr. Payne, are on the two bottom, uh, parrot racks.
On what page?
It's in a handout that I gave you tonight.
I would point out, Mr. Mayor, also, in regard to the, the balance between the wards, um, when you take into consideration the concrete streets that are being done in just the year twenty-one, twenty-two, um, it does balance things out significantly, at least for Ward C, um, not as much for Ward A. Uh, but if you look at the, all the work that's been done over the last few years, it does very well balance out.
Knowledge is power. Where is the, uh, the balance?
Where's the balance that you are pointing to and referencing, Mr. Kelty?
If you look at your council packet.
Well, let me ask you. Go ahead, sir.
If you look at your, in your council packet, following the pictures, Mr. Petty has included a comparison of the streets in twenty-one and twenty-two for asphalt. And then following that is a list of all the concrete streets for twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two.
Which were reviewed and approved.
And these are streets, the first list of streets are being designed by Freezer Nichols and are probably gonna be bid in December. And then the second list of streets are already approved by Councilmen are being designed also, but they probably won't let until June, this year, twenty-one, until, even twenty-two. So they will, the concrete work on those will commence immediately upon completion of the concrete streets that will be left in December.
Correct, which were approved and sent for inspection.
Yes, sir.
So, Mayor, hold the record. What's the last page that I'm referencing? I'm trying to still look for the street addresses that you and I had discussed, Mr. Kelty?
Yes, sir.
'Cause I'm looking at.
The streets that Mr. Pena requested were the Ryan Beach entrance from second, the second entrance to the beach, the alley.
I didn't request those. Prior to our conversation, you mentioned that those are already part of the plan. Is that right? So the only conclusions that I had were actually specific to downtown.
The second entrance was.
The second entrance is not, the first beach entrance is included as well as that street.
Okay. The second entrance to beach, you're talking about the elbow as being included in our private conversation?
Yes, it was for our conversation on our private conversation.
And so I hope you understand, are we saying that it will be included or will not?
It is not currently included. If council wants to add any of these streets that you or Councilman Mariah have added, we can do that once we have to pick out something else that is already in the list.
Or the chair will entertain a motion to approve what's already been looked at, reviewed, and basically approved by all council courts.
So moved.
No, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
We have a second from Councilman Kane in regards to approving the streets that were identified by the county in our local agreement, twenty-one, twenty-two, through cooperation with Council Kane and with Mr. Kelty and with Mr. Petty. And good Lord, so. So, with that in mind, is there any further questions on that?
I would just like to see that we look to add things and that might be part of two things. Number one, will we look at that beach entrance project as a council? And if we had talked about putting some little granularity to the details of that project, that we consider having a budget amendment to include this space, specifically that second beach entrance.
I figured that that entrance was generally discussed and anything to do with that, I figure. So, with that, Councilman Mariah, you have any further comments?
No, sir.
No, all the questions. All those, if they're ready, say aye. Aye, aye, all opposed.
Nay.
We have one nay from Councilman Mariah. Motion carried. Mr. Petty, before you leave, I know you're heading to the sixth child real quick, but I'm gonna go out of order and get to the workshop and just say, will you tell Mr. Matoya, give him an update on what's going on with the lights and us to build? He may not have been at past meetings where we discussed it, but how it transferred briefly, I want you to get over your daughter from the school to us to Centerpoint and the problem.
Yes, sir. The main transformer at the school had, had issues with it beyond repairing. I contacted the school. The school would not do anything to help repair that transformer. But I've been on the phone constantly with Ron Sars with Centerpoint, got hold of John Selinas with Centerpoint. They sent me to another area of Centerpoint to get an ESID number for that location to be able to put in a new load of transformers so we can put a new service in down there and get the power back up and running. They don't issue addresses for that corner lock. We got an address issued from Lower Toller. We submitted that. They sent back to us that that's not a valid address. And Mr. Kelty's got a call in to Mr. Selinas right now.
Alright, very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Petty, I just wanna make sure you had an update that we are working towards getting the power back there, but that's where we stand right now. Mr. Petty, your excuse in the meeting. Thank you. Item number seven, discussion of possible action to instruct attorney to take action to remove development restrictions from property in the Texas Parks and Wildlife Open Recreation Program. This is an item that has to be placed on the agenda by Councilman Pena and Councilman Mariah. We have Mrs. McCollum Reles and Mr. Edgar Garcia that would like to make a comment, please. Mr. Reles?
One of the questions I have is what area are we talking about here? And why do we wanna take it off the wall? I mean, what, off the program? Where's this? Where's that?
Good question.
Is it on the east end, Linko Park? No? Or is it?
Here's the deal. We can't necessarily, well, there, no, we are on the, we are on the discussion and the possible actions of course. So it's just, my understanding is, why do what? Councilman Mariah, why don't you tell her what properties we're talking about?
Mr. Mayor, the agenda actually has Mr. Mariah on the agenda, but he wasn't on from one of the requests. He just said he'd like to see that it was on there. But that said, I'd like to make sure that I take the lead on this to speak specifically to the questions that Mrs. Marles has or any other resident of Freeport or visitor of Freeport that have.
Before we do that, real quick, do you have any more questions? And I'll have you sit down and he's prepared to answer. Yes.
I don't know. It is only this.
Okay. I'll take that answer. Ed, how about yourself?
May I mention this property? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I mention the property?
Yes. Well, well, I don't know what property it is 'cause it doesn't specifically say, but if you have an idea, I'm sure.
I have an idea of what this property is.
Alright, go ahead.
It's a property that the city owns on West Second Street. That used to be the old golf course. And it's, I am in favor of the city taking this action, but I am not in favor of the city putting on that property a non-tax generating facility. I think this gives the Freeport Economic Development a good opportunity to put something on there to under generate taxes for the city of Freeport. Not a nonprofit organization that is not gonna generate any taxes.
And let me do this, Mr. Garcia, 'cause that's actually jumping ahead. Right now, we're just talking about whether or not are we going to move forward with this. So you're in favor.
Of the city taking this action. I'm not in favor of the city providing this opportunity to a nonprofit organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Edgar Garcia, Ted Garcia. Excuse me. Alright, Mr. Pena?
So I have some handouts. I'll have some handouts and then I'll go through, explain why I wanted this on the agenda and so the council can decide and vote here in this space. So, Mr. Kane, you might pass that down. I don't have time to create the multimedia so they could be overhead. But these maps will suffice for council to understand.
Do you have time to share? You're welcome. We have one to discuss.
I have even a headset. So this map here shows two things. One, the acreage that Mr. Garcia made me describe, but you can see it here on the map. And I do apologize to the public that they don't have this copy here, but it will be on a matter of public record if you'd like to have it in digital format.
Sure, Aaron.
And it's my understanding that this property that we're looking at includes the land that we are supposed to be swapping with the school board plus the approximately twenty-five acres on that property on Second Street that used to house the old community house. And I wanted to make sure that we all are on the same page, that we know which property was on here now. That's pretty much it.
Alright, so.
Any questions on that? So, let me go on. I'll go ahead and, and make my presentation.
Real quick, please, let me have Chris Duncan, City Attorney, discuss the Texas Parks and Wildlife Open Recreation Program and the process real quick.
You know, that's fine.
Okay, so back in nineteen ninety-four, the Texas Parks and Wildlife had a program where they would give grant money to cities to buy playground equipment or other recreational equipment. In exchange for receiving that money, the city would have to agree to put property into the open space recreation program. Basically, that would be in the form of a deed restriction so that that property that benefited from this equipment or this grant would be forever held as open space recreation. It didn't have to be a park with playground equipment. It could be just an open field, okay, that the people could have recreation in. And so back in nineteen ninety-four, and I believe it was, I don't, I don't know the dollar figure that it was. But, so back in nineteen ninety-four, the city entered this agreement with Texas Parks and Wildlife and included all of Municipal Park, everything at the end of the river, right here, under the big electric towers. And then the jogging trail all the way along the levee to just past the boat ramp by the old Freeport Community House. It's also included the property that the high school baseball and softball field is located on. And further, it includes all of the property, the walking trail and all of the property on the water side of the levee. In addition to the property, the old golf course where the Freeport Community House was, all the way to Second Street. So that parcel on Second Street where the old community house was, that property on both sides of the levee is between twenty-five and thirty acres. The land that the V I C built their ballparks on, I'm not sure how many acres that is. And then also the walking trail and then Municipal Park and then the end of the river.
And so what are the limitations on the property, Mr. Duncan?
Okay, so right now, that property cannot be developed in any manner. It can only be used for open space recreation. So back in around two thousand fourteen, I believe, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, there was discussion about taking the property or some of the property out of that program. And so I went up to Austin and I met with the person in charge of the program with Texas Parks and Wildlife. I met with the lady and then several staff members and looked into the, what the process was to change, remove that designation and allow for another type of development. I think at that time, maybe they were looking at doing something at the end of the river. I can't remember exactly what the reason was. Anyway, so that process is that you can, Texas Parks and Wildlife is pretty easy to belong with because a lot of cities did this and they committed property and then they decided they wanted, they changed their mind. They wanna do something else.
Alright, so what's the process to change it?
So the process is is about six months process. And you have an appraisal. You have designated another piece of property that you swap out with. And that property has to have similar size, value, and similar recreational opportunity. It doesn't have to be the same recreational opportunity. It could be different recreational opportunity. And then.
So let me ask this, Chris. If you have an open piece of land that's in a park, can you trade it for another piece of open land that potentially could be a park?
Yes, sir. You can, you can exchange it for an existing park. You can change it for another piece of property that you say you plan to develop into a park. Or you can exchange it for a piece of property that you don't even own. You say, our plan is we want to acquire that property and maybe turn it into a park. So they're pretty easy in the designation. Now, this, y'all don't have the map, but the property with the baseball field, due to the transaction that we did with the school district recently, as a requirement of that, the school district is required that we remove that use with Texas Parks and Wildlife. The school district is getting that property as theirs, their ownership as part of that deal. They gave us a time limit to go to the state and remove that designation until then. The question is if we're removing that designation for that property, do we want to consider other property or only that property in doing that process because it would be easier for you to decide what property you wanna remove and do it all at the same time.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Mr. Pena?
Thank you. Trying to hold this up here, but I know that, well, I've shown this here before and everybody's probably familiar with the old Freeport Harbor plan. And I believe actually, Mr. Riddick had helped to consult with LJA to get this architectural ready, ready that Municipal, the Municipal Park with downtown via.
Hold on, we're gonna find Jerry's communicator.
Thank you. Anyway, this plan here, we have a larger one here. I can't, yeah, it's right there on the wall.
There you go.
So this is what I got. And I'm talking about this because this is the vision that I had created. It was already here. But it was actually a vision that shipped, that really, no, we got it all. And so me on actually moved a Freeport investment and buying the oldest North Bank building. And I thought, hey, Freeport's got ideas and we're moving forward. And I don't wanna live in Gelson or Lake Jackson. And so the thinking on this was, we gotta make this, make it happen, right? So there's three areas that are identified and have been really a focus of the EDC over the last two or three years, at least since I've been on the board. And those three are the downtown area, this particular space on Second Street there by the old community house, and also the municipal space. So those are the three major locations that have always been of interest to develop.
And what do you define as a municipal space?
I'm sorry. I'd like to see this one part down here. Yes, sir. But let me, with that preface, let me just say this. We need to start taking action to help encourage programs and projects that can maximize the highest invests use of city-owned properties to increase property tax and sales tax. And this is really kind of the point of Mr. Garcia that I mentioned. The greatest potential to meet that in is utilizing our riverfront properties, first of all, I should say, our waterfront properties, the river, really. The designations that we're talking about here today with the wildlife park designation and the zoning changes that are needed, need to happen. And by doing so, we can start attracting serious development. And there are already, you can think that have been already serious interests and planning for that space. And so by removing the designation, does not commit us to any particular design tonight, but it does ensure that the public's use and maximum potential is met. We will need to consider the possibility that we need to replace the future of the industrial funds. And this is one of the best ways that we can look at it because I've, I've only ever sent it that has been shared long before I got here. And it's the water, the waterfronts, and we gotta utilize and act on developing those spaces. Now, the side note here is the Xanny Chamber has brought a project forward here. And it's one of the multiple projects that we are aware of. And we will be vetting, I hope the council and, and the city, vetting them and to ensure the financial backing and making sure that there's a comprehensive value site plan and that it has a comprehensive solution to what was envisioned. And on that note, I'd like to make the motion to instruct the city attorney to take action to remove development restrictions from the property in the Texas Parks and Wildlife Open Recreation Program as shown in the handout for the purposes of possible mixed-use development that number one ensures public access to the river, which is sacrosanct and includes green spaces for the public use. That is my motion.
Nice thinking.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to consider possible action approving the, no, excuse me. To instruct Mr. Duncan to take action to remove development restrictions from property in Texas Parks and Wildlife Open Recreation Program. Is there discussion? I think not. I fixed that. That'd be one of my questions. Anybody else have questions?
I have a question on the twenty-five acres. That, that total is all the way around the red, not just by the boat ramp, correct? And that includes the school district plan?
Yes, Jerry.
As I understand it, this. As I understand it, this, this particular red outline is the portion that is, uh, of most, um, meaningful to the riverfront in this particular area of the river, number one. But secondly, it includes the, the property, the baseball field that we are swapping with the school board, and also the twenty-five acres, uh, where the old community house used to be. And that's from Second Street to the riverfront.
I guess that's the point I'm making, the, where the old community house used to be is not twenty-five acres, so I'm asking, is this total twenty-five acres, makes a difference, is what we're talking about?
Well.
There's not twenty-five acres.
I don't have the survey in front of me.
There's not twenty-five acres that the old community house was on, whatever.
The, the dark shade of blue within the, the circumference of the, uh, red outline that I've drawn on the map is the area that I'm speaking about. I was understanding that, you know, it's twenty-five acres. If it's not twenty-five acres, so be it, you can make sure what the survey says is what it is.
No, I'm saying it's very important in what we're doing, if we're talking about trading twenty-five acres, are we talking about trading a hundred acres?
Well, I don't want to get bogged down into the minutia of whether it's twenty-five acres or twenty-four acres. However, I do want to make sure that we are acting on, um, opening that space there that is on Second Street.
But Councilman Penney, you, you're missing my point, what I'm, what I'm asking.
I understand your point, sir, please, I'll.
Look, okay, what I'm asking you is, we have to come up with how many acres we're removing. Okay?
Okay.
And it's a lot easier to come up with twenty-five than it is one hundred, is what I'm saying. I want to know before I vote on this, how many acres are we truly talking about? I mean, we're asking for action, you know, and it's just like this man Chamber, I love him to death, I support him through my mayorship, I support him today. But I want a plan, and I want a solid plan, because I don't ever want to have another Marina situation or, or all the debacles that we've, we've screwed up in our, in our time. And I'm saying our time, in every picture that you see on the wall up there.
Well, that's one more time.
And I, and I, and our time, well, but we're going right back to our time, Jeff. And what I'm saying is, I want to know exactly how many acres we're talking about removing before we approve to do it, and then we're sitting there saying, well, where are we going to come up with a hundred acres that we approved?
So here's the deal. I don't want to mischaracterize what, what I am suggesting here, and I don't want to, uh, marry this, uh, this plan and this opportunity and say it's the same thing like the Marina, because that was not vetted.
Jeff, that's not the point, the point is how many acres.
My point is that this is going to be vetted. This is, you're talking about the cart before the horse, and there's plenty of horse right here. And all I'm asking is that we remove that designation, primarily whatever that acreage is, and we can figure out the supplemental acreage to meet that twenty-five threshold, but at a minimum, this particular space, which is in question, in which the E D C has been, uh, in serious negotiations over the last two years with various developers, and, and here we are now, we have this Channing Chamber that's also strongly interested in this space, and that is great, and we're going to look at all these different programs, and we're going to try to get the best one that really fulfills the potential of Freeport and maximizes our tax revenue. So I would say it this way, to answer your question, Councilman Brinich, is that it would include this acreage here on Second Street as we know it, between Second and the river, as drawn on this map. I didn't know that I was going to have to read a survey and, and a schematic design site plan, but we can probably pencil to be able to do this. And whatever is supplemental, whatever supplemental, uh, acres is needed to meet that twenty-five threshold, we can find that and we will, we will address that. But for tonight's purposes alone, I want to make sure that the baseball field and the, the acreage of this land here, where the community house, um, and its riverfrontish space, as outlined on this map, is, uh, removed from the, uh, Texas Wildlife Program.
What I.
So I'll be getting the motion.
Hold on, let's see.
And then it's to instruct the city attorney to take action to remove development restrictions from this property as shown in the handout for the purposes of a possible mixed-use development. That's it.
Hey, Jeff, uh, Mr. Councilman, uh, Penney, contractually, the ballpills will be done prior to a separate document. Now, they, this, if council approves this tonight, maybe contemporaneously, but if council does not approve this tonight, the ballfield situation, as well as the Freeport intermediate, which was basically a land swap, will take place if we have the obligation to do so. But, but, you know, my question is, um, is this particular map, I mean, what your, what your motion states is, is what I call an omnibus type thing, and it's like you're saying for a whole, I don't need, thank you, but I don't need it. Um, if you have a right to say things, but, but care. Um, is, is not specific enough, because I thought you also were talking about, uh, the parks down town.
I know we do.
I didn't wish to be personal.
That I thought that was, and we have to figure out exactly too, before, in my opinion, before we do this, where are we going to find the land to, to put this around? I mean, so I'm not saying, I understand the cart and the house, and I do, the cart and the horse in the, in the river, the river, what we're gonna call it. I'm just concerned about the specific. Question.
I think there's a misunderstanding of the process that I, that I mentioned, right?
So nobody really asked your opinion just yet, we'll go ahead.
He asked me to explain the process, and there seems to be some confusion about the process.
The specific is the confusion.
All right, so the confusion is this. Number one, it does not have to be an exact acre-for-acre match. Number two, it's a working process that goes out through over six months with Texas Parks and Wildlife, where you're able to propose different, uh, parcels and they look at it and then they approve or disapprove it. So let's say hypothetically, the council approves to, to, is, to attempt to take all of this property out, right? And then Texas Parks and Wildlife says, well, your, your proposed site is not close enough to the acreage, so we'll only let you take twenty acres, right? Then that would be the only portion that would be approved. So it's, it's not taken out unless Texas Parks and Wildlife agrees to take it out. So if y'all approve all of it, when we go through the working process with Texas Parks and Wildlife, they may approve all of it or a portion of it, um, but, uh.
Are our parks included in this, uh, uh, in the Texas Parks and Wildlife Open Recreation Program?
Only the municipal park. Only the, only the stuff on, on, on this map in front of you. Everything outlined in blue.
What do you consider this for? If I'm not, I mean, you can say, I mean, here's my problem. Once again, I think I would want a more specific motion than just the Texas Parks and Wildlife Open Recreation Program, because if this is approved, while we may just want to stop here on the red, Jeff, we all get deep and we all get sucked up in a tornado and somebody comes in and says, well, I want to take the municipal park and I want to sell it to Target. And by removing the Texas Parks and Wildlife designation from that, it's possible.
I don't want to get into a debate of hypotheticals, Mayor.
I understand, well, this is all hypotheticals. Right, Alan?
Well, the final action with Texas Parks and Wildlife would need further action by council.
Now, Mr. Duncan, you, you reviewed this, Mario reviewed this, Jeff proposed it, Mario seconded, and we have a survey. There's a survey in City Hall. So why didn't y'all do your homework before you put something on the agenda for action? This is how we get in trouble.
And we get in trouble.
It's clear. This is how we get in trouble.
Well, yeah, but it's in trouble. Because when we sell it, uh, for a fraction of its value, that's where we get in trouble. And we get in trouble is when we don't do the due diligence of vetting developers who want to use these spaces or come in here and develop, uh, here in Freeport, that's where we get in trouble. But this right here is not a troublesome spot. This is creating, this space, making it available, because I can tell you that this will happen. And actually, I don't know if I can communicate what I need to tell you here, because some of that is executive session privilege through, um, the E D C. So I will, uh, have to reframe in terms of what, the background of that, and put that to executive session, you're right. I don't know if that's.
But actually, as far as, when the property was put in the program, there was no survey done, it was based completely on this map. There was no survey in the agreement, then the agreement says, the stuff marked blue on this map. So I was surprised when I met with Texas Parks and Wildlife that there wasn't any more specific. Um, that was done with, uh, I guess, Mr. Vicki. Um, they just highlighted this map and now it's how the designation.
I was trying to adopt a survey for you, I've seen it before, I'd love for land to come out of it, but I want to do it the right way. I mean, um, we did do a survey of the specific property he was talking about for the E D C last year. That is a variable.
Okay, thanks, sir. Councilman Penney.
I, I agree with both Councilman Brinich and both, and Councilman Penney. This is prime land, and it would benefit the city to have something on that land that is going to generate tax dollars and bring people to the city. With that, Mr. Penney, I agree with you a hundred percent. But I also agree that we need to have our ducks in a row. We need to have specifics, this is what we're going to do, uh, this is the amount of land. So with that being said, I would hope you would take your motion off, but stable it, give that information, and random.
I would support it one hundred percent, I just want to do it the right way, that's all.
This next meeting is all I'm asking.
Thank you, Mr. Penney. I, um, if we can get that on the agenda, and then all we're looking at is a survey, and we need to button down the specifics of leads and bounds and latitudes and longitudes to satisfy the discussion and the parameters, I'm happy to do that. Um, and I've, you know, the big, the biggest thing is this, I'm just happy we're talking about this. I really am. We can beat it up ten different ways later on, but it's nice that we're talking about this, because this needs to be on the table. This is the, these are the kind of conversations that need to start happening and have been lacking because there's some changes, infrastructure-wise, planning-wise, zoning-wise, that are going to move this city forward. So I'm glad that we're talking about it and I'm glad to move to the next meeting. And hopefully we have a full call, because I know people get in a holiday mood, but I'm happy to pull it back and go.
Councilman Mariah.
I agree.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're gonna have to hold the next meeting outside of Woodville, about twenty miles from my here, man. All right, very good, uh, I, I do appreciate the constructive, uh, and I do appreciate our participation for any reason. Uh, but I do appreciate constructive comments from, uh, the restrained Troy Brinich and the.
I'm passionate, I'm passionate.
Actually, Councilman Penney actually spoke about enough this time for me to hear. Um, but I'll tell you, my, my last thought on that is, is I don't have a problem taking out either, but I want a map that just, that does not take out the Freeport Municipal Park, uh, property from, uh, your Redmond area. Well, it's not in your Redmond area, uh, we can step back on it, that's certainly what I'm looking at. So ladies and gentlemen, we will table item number seven, and I agree with you, good conversation going forward. Item number eight, consideration of possible action approving, number twenty-two-one-one, dash two-six-four-six, setting regulations for tow truck fees, Chief. Move it, keep it, Jeff.
Yes.
Mayor, Council, what you have in front of you is consideration of possible action approving, uh, new tow, uh, tow fees, uh, regulations for non-consensual toes. Currently, we charge a hundred dollars, uh, what I'm being told, that was over ten years ago. Uh, Clute and Lake Jackson currently do a hundred and thirty, and the county, I talked to the sheriff, uh, last week, they're actually going up to a hundred and sixty. What I'm asking is for us to move forward and, and move up, uh, Clute and Lake Jackson and move the fee up to a hundred and thirty. And these are non-consensual toes with people arrested, parking violations, abandoned vehicles type things, uh, this is no cost to the city at all.
I do need to clarify one thing, and that is, this is not something the city charges. Uh, this is something that the tow truck, the tow companies charge, this is actually we authorize them to charge up to this particular line. Not because it is us that is calling for the tow.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, uh, the council agenda item number eight. Uh, I'm assuming raising the, uh, current rate from one hundred dollars to one hundred and thirty dollars for toes, is there a second? No second. You have said down the thing, is there further discussion?
So, so we're charging the citizens, uh, that, we, we, that's what we're doing, we're charging the citizens thirty dollars more?
Correct.
We're actually not, we're not charging them, it is a tow, the tow company's fault.
Why would we, uh, raise it for, for citizens to pay?
Because of the fact that we have to have the tow companies, we, when we call for a tow, we need to have a tow.
So they're requesting it then?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct, yeah, I mean, it's one thirty everywhere else, why are we only a hundred? And it's not us, these people get arrested or abandoned vehicles, we, like you said, we need records to come out. You'll start using record service, but they're not going to come over here for a hundred bucks.
So, we're not, we're gonna, we're gonna lose rotation records, and just like we got one bin on our garbage, it's the same thing, we got to say competitive.
I mean, obviously, they ask for one sixty and, and as a G, it says, I get to say, I'll win for one hundred.
I'd, uh, you know, I'll, I'll tell you how it is, so, so I, I got in a car crash, uh, probably last week or this week, or, you know, on Saturday, and, uh, I totaled my vehicle, I ended up paying the, the record, you know, it stayed there for, stayed in their lot for around three days, or I, I paid around four hundred and eight dollars, so, you know, it's a, it's a lot of money, man, it just don't really even thirty dollars, but.
You should be covered under insurance for that, you should be reimbursed for that, I mean.
But that's, that's not what we're talking about here tonight. Goes back to no, what we're, what we're talking about is, when a person gets arrested and it's on a rotation call, you have no control over that record coming and picking up your car. We have to depend on the record to get that car off to the highway safely and out of the way so our officers can get back to patrol. If we are, if we, if we lose records on rotation, then our officers are sitting on the side of the road waiting for a record forever to come and get. It's a, it's a, it's a public safety issue, it has nothing to do with you having a wreck. It has to do with a rotation that you have no control over, you went to jail for a crime that you committed, and that's what, that's what this is.
Okay, that's all right.
Yeah, it's like, it's a difference.
No, I got it, I got it.
As far as this, uh, this, this, uh, is it an actual contract, or is it, uh, just a quote that we do? How does it confirm?
It's, it's an ordinance, it's the maximum that the record driver can charge, and if they, uh, charge more than the maximum, then the chief can take them off the list and they don't get to make record costs.
And I guess the other question I have, just while it's brought up, I've read about this, uh, most of them do it, but is there anything within these particular orders, I didn't see it, it says they have to clean up the site as well, something like that.
That's in a different ordinance.
Yeah, it's in, it's one.
It's one of our ordinances, no, this isn't one.
They do real good about that, those guys have no problems getting here, we have some to take it.
Thank you, any further questions for Chief? Now, my call to question, all those, we do have a motion, a second, sorry, all those in favor say aye. Aye, aye, all closed. Motion carried, man, so, thank you, Chief. Item number nine, consideration of possible action on resolution number twenty-two-one-one, dash two-seven-one-six, in opposition to the development of a temporary asphalt plant, uh, there is a Mr. Zach Dooley here today. Uh, he is on our agenda and is requested to speak to this particular item, he is from Vulcan Materials. Mr. Dooley, microphone's yours, sir.
Good evening, Councilman.
Good evening.
My name's Zach Dooley, I'm the Vulcan, I'm the manager of community and government relations for Southwest Division of the Vulcan Materials Company. Vulcan currently has a shipyard at Port Freeport, located at ten fifty-five Turner Basin Drive, Freeport, Texas, seven seven five Vulcan. We also operate a rail yard at Act Four. For those of you who don't know, Vulcan is the nation's largest producer of construction materials, primarily crushed stone, sand, and granite, and a major producer of aggregate-based construction materials, including asphalt and ready-made concrete. We opened our shipyard at the port almost twenty years ago, and our rail yard at the port opened last year. The reason I am here tonight is to address item number nine on the agenda, which is quote, consideration of possible action on resolution number two-three-two-one-dash-two-seven-one-six, in opposition to the development of a temporary asphalt plant. This resolution is a producer of potential Hopkins asphalt plant that would be operated by Vulcan on property owned by Port Freeport. Before y'all consider this resolution, I want to first make sure that you were aware that Vulcan has not yet filed an air permit application with the Texas Commission on Environmental, Environmental Quality, also has a P C Q related to this potential Hopkins asphalt plant.
Hey, Mr. Dooley, uh, I was, if there was not a record in the here, I was gonna read the email that you did send me, but you didn't send the email ahead, go ahead, Chief.
Sure, please, sir. As such, I respectfully request the city council to table consideration of this resolution that Vulcan has the opportunity to discuss this potential project with all municipal members and the city council. These discussions will include a briefing about the plant and expected operations on site, details about the types of project this plant will supply, and any other persons council members might have about the proposed plant. Additionally, we would like to arrange for one of our nearby Hopkins asphalt plants so council members can see similar plant and our operations in person. We actually have one, uh, it's our Lockwood Asphalt Plant in Houston. This, well, this plant will be beneficial to the local economy provided a local source for Hopkins asphalt to supply everything from the Highway Thirty-Six expansion to the remaining local streets. And given our experience across the country, and as an industry leader, we know that this plant will comply with all laws and regulations to be protected for public health and the environment. I sent you all an email earlier today, as the mayor just referenced, please feel free to reach out, uh, if you have any questions. My phone number, my email is on there, I look forward to working with you all on this project.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please say, come back. Ladies and gentlemen, this, uh, was brought to council's attention, and we put it on the agenda, it was also brought to our attention by some citizens as well, um, and, uh, the issue. The issue that we had is, is basically, Mr. Dooley, you're still here, is placement, uh, you only spoke of this yet, but I'm sure you might. Uh, but, uh, is placement, that, when I saw the proposed plans, this is going to be placed within inside of my alma mater, Janong Elementary, but more importantly, all those ducks and geese in the reserve that the city of Freeport has worked with to present that. Uh, I have been around hot asphalt. I have paid many a road over here in Rosary County and worked, uh, permission brought us. It's hot, it's stinky, uh, and I used to go to the plant and pick it up there, at Eagle Tech or As Tech, or whatever it was I used to pick it up from. So you're gonna have to really do a lot of convincing, uh, in my mind at least, in regards to the safety and cleanliness and odor and potential, uh, nuisance that it might provide. Because if I'm correct, and the, the land that the port is going to allow y'all to build this on is, is right there on what we call Loop Road, Highway Thirty-Six. Is that correct?
Mayor, please. Uh, my, yes, sir. Um, I know for the zoning of that piece of land, um, even in the city council agenda item, we're, um, appropriately putting in the right kind of, um, locations. Um, furthermore, you know, I appreciate the question, and this is why I would, for me, each and every one of you individually, um, so we can have a detailed briefing of what our plant would do, our operations, and so we can continue to educate, um, on this plan. So that's.
So do you believe opposition from the city of Freeport would prevent T C Q from giving you a permit to build this asphalt plant?
Your question, I'm sorry.
Oh, my gosh. I hate when they ask me that. Most time I forget it. Do you believe opposition from the city of Freeport will prevent you from receiving a permit from T C Q to build your plant there?
You know, I, I appreciate that question, sir, but again, I, I want to make sure that we're all, that we have the opportunity to discuss this with the city council, and then we can take discussions from them.
So your statement that you put in your, uh, tonight, sir, and, and what you're gonna do, appreciate you getting this, uh, in the email, is that, uh, the company Vulcan Materials will not seek a permit for use for a temporary hot asphalt or permanent hot asphalt plant, uh, in this area.
We have the file permit, yeah.
That's not my question. Now I can be a little more direct. My question was, are you telling me, in front of all these people behind you that are born holes in the back, uh, with just their eyes, here's the chief right there, that y'all will not seek a permit without our approval?
Again, we want to make sure we have conversations brief you all. You know, we found out about, on this, you know, the agenda late Friday evening.
And we found out about a month ago. You're on the planet in this for a long time. So this is something that, you know, in my opinion, should have been discussed. So I think it answers my question. Councilor, any questions for Mr. Dooley?
Yeah, I'd like to, has anybody signed up for a public commentary? On this particular agenda?
Uh, I'm actually, I think, uh, no, just Mr. Dooley did. Yes, yes, and present.
I, um, I'm just curious how this was brought to our attention, and why we, uh, got it here this, this week? And this has been ongoing here for a couple of months now?
At midnight? Yes, we've had meetings with members of the city, and, um, I'm, so why it was denied, I can't answer that question. Um, we know that.
Well, I would just say, in fairness, uh, to commerce, uh, I'm interested in having a, a deeper conversation about the location, uh, the revenues, but certainly the safety. I mean, right now, we have some issues with our air from time to time, and certainly some like compound issue, and so I'm very interested to see what that conversation, um, sounds like.
So just to reconfirm the mayor's, uh, question, we're gonna meet before y'all apply. We're gonna meet before y'all apply for a permit.
Excuse me, uh, yes, sir.
Okay. I make a motion to the table, uh, item number nine, uh, until we meet with Vulcan.
I'll say it now.
With the understanding, Mr. Dooley, that you bestowed us, and I don't know if you're mad, but I'm hoping you're mad at your word, that if we all not want to proceed until we talk, is that correct? And I guarantee this, we're not gonna wait a year and a half. Now, we want to get into immediate talks and figure out if we need to go forward with our resolution of what we need to do, which could, in my opinion, uh, potentially entail lawsuits and so forth, they respond by the placement. So knowing all that, you're okay with this?
Yes, sir. We welcome having meetings with every single one of you.
And y'all will make yourself available as soon as possible, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you'll go to Woodlow, Texas?
I can have it.
Alright, with that idea, my opinion, as the chief likes it, uh, we will, council, we will, uh, uh, really agenda that item, and, uh, you will be hearing from our representative shortly, so we can go forward this tour and talk a little bit further.
Yes, sir. Appreciate that, thank you.
I'll meet the table.
We'll table, okay, yeah, table, my men.
Now, all of this is your question, correct, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Mr. Dooley, what's gonna be safe going home?
Yes, sir, thank you all.
Alright, now we have item number ten, consideration of possible action on resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two seven one seven, proven, proven, an opioid settlement with Johnson and Johnson. Mr. Kelkey?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you perhaps have a, a resolution that Mr. Duncan prepared, uh, regarding a settlement, uh, with the, with regards to the opioid, um, agreement that was negotiated by the state. It involves Johnson and Johnson and a number of different, uh, organizations that, um, there were some underhanded dealings, and, uh, basically as part of this, uh, if we agree to this settlement, um, the city would be eligible to receive the eighty-nine thousand seventy-two dollars and forty-three cents, according to Mr. Duncan. Um, and, uh, so I do recommend that we do both, which is our other option would be, I believe, have to proceed with litigation ourselves, which would not really be practical.
Alright, uh, with that, real quick, uh, Mr. Duncan, uh, why don't you, uh, give just a brief synopsis, please?
Right, yeah, there's one more, one more item. So, uh, basically, uh, opioid manufacturers, distributors sold these, uh, different prescription drugs, and they were very addictive, and there's some claims that they knew that they were addicted, and there's lawsuits that came from that. Technically, the city could have tried to sue all of these manufacturers on their own, and tried to get some money out of the manufacturers. However, the state of Texas, uh, has sued. These are the first four. There are more settlements to come. And so by agreeing to this, we agreed we will accept the settlement done by the state of Texas, and we won't have to sue on our own behalf. It's eighty-nine thousand dollars as a direct payment. Uh, like I said, this is just for the first four defendants. There will be more coming, and we'll have to agree to that later. But also, it's a sixty-six million dollars for our region, uh, that we would be eligible to apply for grants. And so that's where the, the bulk sum of the money is going to be. And our region does not include Houston, so it's, uh, Rosaria County, Gauster County, Fort North, or Orange, up in that area. So those are the cities that we would be competing, competing with to get the grants up to sixty-six million dollars. And it's for, those grants are for drug education, drug prevention, uh, maybe, uh, payments, uh, grants to police departments dealing with arrests and processing their drug addiction issues, additional possible ambulance or EMS services, uh, related to opioid issues. So the eighty-nine thousand doesn't sound overwhelming, but the sixty-six million, if we play our cards right, and, and apply for grants, is where, you know, we will actually be, we get.
And Councilor, I'm certainly behind this, but I want to be more specific. I, I'd rather we find some way to use that money, those eighty-nine thousand dollars, to, uh, help those that are addicted, uh, help the families that are having to deal with this. Uh, and so we reach out to facilities within our community that service this need, um, and rather than just going to your own budget for some other particular item, sir. With that, I'll certainly enter time to motion.
I mean, motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, item number ten. We have a second from Councilman Grimich. Uh, any further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries now. Thank you. Would that be item number nine is being tabled?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we have some folks that want to speak on item number eleven, consideration of possible action to remove board members from the Freeport Economic Development Corporation Board. Uh, ladies first, Ms. Nicole Morelles.
Can I wait till after all the comments are made?
Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
I ain't waiting till you do it, too. Mr. Eddie Garcia?
I'm not gonna wait.
Alright.
I'm not gonna wait, because I think it's time that we, we find out if, uh, Mr. Penney is a man of his word, or he sat there just to speak. I believe that it is an issue of petty politics that brings this issue to the board. I think it's a waste of time, but the council should consider this, but I'll, I'll give that thing I have to say. I'm the president of Freeport Economic Development Corporation, and I think our board is called as acted in the best interest of the city of Freeport.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sam Reyna? You know, Sam, I apologize. I saw, I didn't see number seven. I just saw number eleven as well.
Well, it's being tabled.
Yeah, uh, okay, good. I'm sorry.
Mayor, Councilor, good evening. My, uh, name is, uh, Sam Reyna, and I reside in two thousand and two, North Evans, E. K. And, uh, by the way, we're not gonna get invited to volunteer. You also was, no one doesn't like. Nobody wants to volunteer for these committees. Nobody has the pass. For that reason, board members for volunteers, if they get appointed to the board, they should be allowed to finish their terms, and then if they need to be removed, don't reappoint them. But they don't finish their term. Three months ago, the E D C was short two members, Mr. Mario Moradia, Mama Lady George, and Miss Marshall, and they were both appointed. Mrs. Nicole Vidalas was out for reappointment, and Councilman, Mr. Troy Grimich, made a motion to reappoint Nicole. Councilman Mario Moradia seconded that motion, and Nicole was reappointed. Been four, three months. Now, Mr. Moradia, he wanted to remove Mrs. Vidalas because she'd been bought down to someone's demand. He went to the house.
Well, so, must be very careful.
He went to the house. What I'm saying, he went to, what I'm saying is true. This, you know, what I'm saying is true. And that was, this happened after the last meeting. Mario called me, and then he wanted to talk to Nicole and Mr. Garcia, that we all met at the house. Councilman Mario wanted Nicole and Edward to commit to evidence his managing of commerce. Why?
But let, let me, let me interrupt you.
That, that was, that was item number seven.
Hold on. Right now.
I know, I know.
It, what it, what it states particular to this motion, it just says board member or members. I don't have any specifics as to who they are talking about or whom. Ever, not necessarily that you can, I think you're just gonna say, that you made the motion, and Councilman Mario agreed to it? Or whatever, I don't know what you're gonna say. So hold off on any specifics until we hear anything further. If you got anything, general comments about removing board members, that's fine. Certainly will give you an opportunity to bring other information up.
No, no, but what I would like to say is that if you're appointed, if you're appointed to a committee, let him go ahead and expire their terms. If you don't want him on the board, well, don't reappoint him, but do let him finish his terms. And this is one of the reasons why we don't get a way on the force of conditions, because the sector was the one on the money. If you want to volunteer for a committee, you, you're gonna have to bow down to the council.
Alright, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, there is the last two, leaves Nicole and Kenneth Hayes. Uh, who wants it? Okay.
Mayor, can I interrupt you for a second, real quick?
Only if you, uh, well, you're, if you're gonna, what are you gonna tell me?
There is a white Volkswagen out there with his lights on that are about dead. They just turned off, but it's dead battery.
Can you identify the car?
White Volkswagen.
Oh, you said white Volkswagen. I noticed it. Who has the white Volkswagen? There we go. Hayes, the phone is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilor.
Kenneth Hayes.
Kenneth Hayes, for, for Mr. Armory. You know, the deal about somebody being removed from the E D C, I would have to say that Jim Peaney should be removed from the E D C. The deal about him buying Boys and Girls Club made that as legal as it can be, but it was highly unethical. And he was the president of the E D C at the time. And if anybody was gonna be removed, it should be him, and especially with the conflict, neither on the city council at the same time, so that's what we're talking about.
Alright, Mr. Hayes, and, uh, I can just respond, uh, that that particular issue was researched, um, and, and was presented to email, and we heard a report on that. So, Nicole?
I guess I need to wait till.
If, if you'd like to wait to see if you're one of those folks?
Yeah, I want to, want to finally move.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Penney, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Um, can I ask for a bottle of water, a fresh one, because I'm not yours, thank you.
I didn't open it.
Yes, sir. You have this on Facebook, is that right?
Yes. Which, by the way, the Facebook is?
The devil.
The devil, thank you, right there. That's what I wanted to understand.
Thank you. I have a fair statement, because I don't want to lose track of my thoughts, and I wouldn't go on too long if I've been customarily accused, Mr. Mayor. When I decided to run for city council, it was because I saw that I could have a greater impact on helping Freeport move forward. That has not changed. As a non-native to Freeport, I would not be beholden to the petty politics that had plagued Freeport for decades. That's the key word right there, the key phrase, petty politics. And while I was on E D C, I saw that repeatedly. I was repeatedly singled out for simply asking the tough questions and giving the hard truths versus avoiding accepting the status quo, or for that matter, playing along with the petty politics that have stunted Freeport's growth. My thoughts are simply this. If you want to truly see the best Freeport, then I am interested in working with you. If we respectfully disagree, I'm also open to discussing the. E D C. I have been witnessing for the last eleven months as city councilmen on the E D C, and board members on the E D C, the various petty politics that continue to feed the prevention of Freeport growth, as well as the nevotism and squirting. When it's asked, hey, let's see them through their board here, because I'm telling you right now, time is of the essence. Because there are developers here coming to Freeport looking to do business with the city of Freeport. We don't have time to squander waiting for the next election cycle. The city can't risk waiting for that. That said, there are so many examples of the actions that I want to bring to bear for the council tonight, but I had to make categories. And I'll just list, I had about twelve, but I'm just gonna list about the first four. There's petty political squir, petty political scorekeeping. There's financial malfeasance, manipulation of administrative and meeting agendas, and exclusion of board members, and, uh, subverting development that actually maximizes Freeport's interest. And really, that's kind of the one I, I want to lead with. And that you have developers that are coming to the E D C, and there's been some, some very, uh, specific subversion of those developments. That said, I want to make the motion to remove Nancy Garcia and Nicole Morelles from the E D C board effective immediately. On the grounds that they have, and it's a horrible living, have abused their executive decisions on E D C board to undermine the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Development Project and other development initiatives within the E D C, number one. Number two, they have created a highly exclusionary and dictator board of two that punishes any of the seven board members from voicing any ideas that challenges or corrects their own. Three, they have acted brazenly and defiantly against the board's majority input and procedures. Three, they have acted brazenly and defiantly against the board's majority input and procedures. And fifth, they've wasted EDC funds on both projects and administrative expenses.
I second. Sorry? I said, I said, I second.
Well, I'm not done, but I appreciate the, uh, the social issue.
Fine.
I would say this, Mr. Mayor, to the point of something that was brought to me before, when I was falsely accused, being on the EDC board and asked to be removed by a councilman, by being falsely accused, I would have taken this to the EDC board, but knew it would have been another challenge to get it on the agenda to speak on, much less vote on. Waiting until next year would waste plenty of time for a lot of sensitive opportunities. That is all, and that is my motion, thank you.
I second.
So we have a motion from Councilman Peña to remove, my understanding, President Ed Garcia and then Vice President Nicole Morelles. Is that correct? Sorry, she said what?
That is correct.
All right, well, she said her, or she's Vice President?
She said her.
She said her, all right, there we go, make sure she's correct, maybe we're good on the minutes? All right, thank you. And we have a second from Councilman Mariah. Now, Nicole, do you have anything else to say?
Can, can I say something before Nicole says something? It's your, your court mayor, I'm just, I'm asking.
Well, I appreciate the quasi deference, but we'll avoid it, Mr. Grimich.
Kenny Hayes, one of the most successful businessmen in Missouria County, hands down, can't argue it. Mark Friedenberg runs the most successful seafood company, not just seafood market, but supplies every major seafood restaurant. Tillman Bertita, the contacts go on and on and on. Freeport, Texas. Lisa DeRord, over purchasing for the entire Missouria County. Her husband is one of the most successful attorneys in Missouria County. Trey DeRord, I'm sorry, Trey Sullivan, Vice President and CEO of Burner Materials, one of the largest construction companies in Missouria County. All resigned, and I apologize, Jeff, for throwing you out there, all resigned because of Jeff Peña. I personally interviewed them, they all resigned because of Jeff Peña. We cannot have this kind of politics in Freeport. We got rid of this kind of politics in Freeport, and we were moving forward. And we have gone right back to the same manipulation and cloud of smoke. Don't let this fool you, people. Those four people right there walked away from Freeport. You don't get any more quality than that right there. And that was their, their answer. It's just the truth. That's all I have right now.
Mr. Mayor, I want to add a little something to that.
And go ahead, do that, but I don't want, I don't get a lot of...
I don't want to sort of this into a, like he said, she said.
Yeah, go ahead.
But it's important that they strongly accusations and this strong motion are understood by the public. And I want to make sure that the public understands this, because I really wish that the attendance here tonight is at the EDC meetings, and that you can see the surface of it all. And I will tell you this, there's, the list will go on, and I can tell you, there's a combative and toxic culture because of the actions that they have taken that discourage participation. Now, let me say this. When you give the examples, Councilman Grimich, about Mr. Kenny Hayes, and Mark Friedenberg, and Lisa Gerard, and Trey Sullivan resigning, well, let me tell you what, they were never the target of false accusations like I was, but yeah, I stayed the course and stayed on that board. And not because I just wanted to be on the board, no, because I actually got the gatekeeping in place to do all the due diligence on all these contracts that I thought were kind of a little sketch, and I won't even go into accusations of that, but I will just say this, that I stayed the course on that in the interest of what the commitment I made to that board, number one. Number two, Kenny Hayes never agreed with any that I had to say. And Mr. Garcia once told me, Kenny Hayes will never...
Hold on one second.
Will never agree with it.
I can't, I'm not, I'm not gonna censor you, but I can't do that, but I would just strongly encourage you to, to not go that direction.
Well, that said, we can call, we can call, I can go through the, the other...
But this is not part of the motion as it is up tonight.
I understand, but when I have been given accusations, or there's accusations on, on my character and my participation on these boards, it's only fair that I get to express my, my rebuttal.
And I agree a hundred percent, but I'll tell you this, as I told you before, I think you haven't expressed it at all. But I think that's all that you said.
Let me just make one other comment.
Yeah, I know you weren't listening to it.
I still look, man. The city council liaison, Mr. Jerry King, Councilman Jerry King, kind of tested these actions. And these events, we can go through a list of them, I have a list of them, I have an extensive list. And Mayor, I was gonna send it to you, but I withheld simply because I was just gonna try to get short, that's where we are tonight. So I have the motion, I'd like to call the questions, you get with it.
All right, we have a request to call, uh, but before we do, I haven't had to say anything to put that hammer on, Nicole, say something else. But has this been brought to all of the board's attention, in a meeting?
No.
Not, not as you mean it, yeah.
You may not have heard my last comment. As it relates to the EDC, oh, excuse me, let me skip to my last sentence. I would have taken this to the EDC, but knew it would be another challenge to get it on the agenda to speak on, much less get voted on. Waiting until next year would waste plenty of time, sensitive opportunities.
Thank you, sir. Nicole? Never gonna, never vote.
Yeah, I'm just gonna defend myself. All this stuff that Jeff just stated, that's the way it was when he was the president. And I can understand why all these people quit, and I've also talked to a lot of people that, Lisa called me, you know, when all this crap's going on, I got so many calls, like, what's going on? You know, and you gotta figure out what's, what's going on here. This is already the second time, and it's, it was only showing EDC, and you're in the middle of it. So, I'm just saying, you know, and as far as I'm concerned, because I have an opinion, you know, he, I could speak my, my, you know, if I have an opinion, I have questions, you know, I'm the bad guy? He's always asking questions, as far as I'm concerned, you're a bully, that's what you are. And look at me when I'm talking to you.
Hold on, you have any further comments?
Well, that's common, he's a bully, both of these two, and this little boy here too.
Hold on a second, address the mayor next time. Ed, I've got another lady back there in the back who'd like something, says something first. Another lady, if you can come up here if you'll fill out a form, please.
Good evening, Melanie Oldham. Uh, as you know, probably for six years, I've attended the EDC meetings, and a lot of you up here have been on, on the EDC boards. But what I have witnessed at EDC, and I think David McGinty was here.
Go ahead, let's be the court.
We're trying to put blame, I thought we were here to discuss the behavior of, um, EDC has just become a circus. It's unprofessional, I, I almost embarrassed, we haven't pressed for anybody there. Um, and now, you know, Nicole's pointing fingers at Jeff and not, it's just dysfunctional the way the EDC board is right now. And it's, it's, nobody gets anything done because if one says black, the other one's gonna say white. I know, for instance, the issue that we've just been hearing about, about the Hispanic cultural building. I already have people from both sides, you know, Mr. Garcia is against it, and then somebody else is, instead of having good, honest, open discussion, it's just like a free-for-all. And I'm sorry, but Mr. Nicole is very unprofessional to, I know, I, we're here, I'm not talking about Mr. Peña because we're discussing what I've observed. Mrs. Morelles, I'm on the planning commission with her.
Ma'am, let's, let's keep it restricted to the EDC.
But I think the point is, if we're gonna point fingers at Mr. Peña or whatever, now, Mrs. Morelles has not been a good chairman of planning, and she's been very unprofessional. Oh, I see. But as far as the EDC, what I've observed, and if David was here, that neither one of them, as long as they're on the board, nothing will get done with the EDC. It's very, it's unprofessional.
Very good, thank you. Nicole, Ed, we've got a call to vote, uh, Ed and Nicole, you got a chance to speak, I'm gonna give it Ed one more time.
You've heard it from Mr. Peña himself, the past eleven months. He was president for seven of those months. I have been president of the EDC for four months. And I guarantee, everything that he said is going on now was going on during his administration.
Thanks, sir.
I have tried to clean it up, but he continues to be the way he is.
All right, Mr. Peña has called the question, uh, on this particular matter, uh, I will say, is there any further things from council only? If not, the, the motion is to remove, uh, President Ed Garcia and Secretary Nicole Morelles from the Freeport Economic Development Corporation Board. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. The ayes have it, three to two. Aide number twelve, consideration of possible actions to remove board members from the Freeport Planning and Planning Board. Ed Garcia, do you have something to say on this?
Mayor, I hate to repeat myself, it's the same basic petty politics. And unfortunately, another city council member has been promised to get his sister-in-law appointed and another person appointed.
Let's, let's, I know the intentions are high, and I appreciate that, but let's be careful with any statements that are uncoordinated and unsubstantiated, certainly, I don't want to get into the whole spiel of slander and so forth that I had to do before where Mr. Duncan shut me down. So, uh, thank you, Ed, uh, Sam Reyna, do you have a comment? On aide number twelve?
No.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Nicole Morelles, any comment on aide number twelve?
I want to hear the allegations.
Ma'am, I'll answer.
Melanie, do you still have a form, ma'am?
Uh, I will.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, excuse me, Mayor, do you know, we have a forum here, the planning commission.
I'm sorry?
There's three people here, the planning commission.
All right, and who is the third?
She is.
And then we have Mr. Hayes back there in the back. All right, one of y'all will have to be, y'all will have to agree to leave, or I will send one of y'all out. All right, so, uh, we do have a forum here, so we cannot proceed on this particular issue or discussion of this.
Does Mr. Hayes have the, the comment?
Uh, no, there's a forum present. Mr. Duncan, do I remove someone? Since I don't see anybody voluntary willing to leave.
Uh, yes, you may.
Mayor Bass removes the public from the council chamber, can't get along, people. Nicole? Mr. Hayes, step out a minute, so Ms. Melanie Oldham may say something, and I'm not making you go, I'm asking you as a neighbor.
I will.
All right. Go ahead, please, make the room.
Okay, as you know, you all have planned meetings with the planning commission, I know, a year ago, and it's been a great honor to be on, and we've been working hard, all of us, to help rewrite the subdivision and the zoning ordinances.
Nothing to do with that.
But Mrs. Nicole Morelles has been our chairman, and she has disrespected me over and over again. And people tell me, Melanie, just do your job, just be on there. But let me do one, uh, our last meeting was supposed to be last Tuesday, and I had a terrible headache, but I came anyway. And I walked in, and there was only Mrs. Morelles and Eric Hayes. And so, I walked in, we had three important agenda items, to elect new officers, and also to do the final go-over of the zoning ordinance before we presented it to the council. When I walked in and saw there was only Nicole, Eric and myself, I said, can we please just reschedule the meeting to next week? Because we gotta elect new officers, and we need to go over the zoning ordinance one more time thoroughly. She said, no. And I said, but ma'am, we need to, you know, wait until we have the full board of Keith Stoneball and Pastor Deal. Long story short, she said, no, we're gonna go ahead, she said, we're gonna elect officers. And I said, respectfully, Mrs. Morelles, can we please wait till we have the full board here? And she said, no. And immediately, Mr. Hayes said, I nominate myself and Nicole to continue to be president and vice president. And that's, to me, that's not the way to do a meeting, it may be legal, but it's unethical. And this is just one small example. Uh, you know, I've just, I've tried to work as a team, and Pastor Deal and Keith Stoneball should have had the opportunity to be there when we elected those officers.
Okay.
And, uh, so, I, I've seen a lot of very unprofessional things from Mrs. Morelles, and I'm sorry, I, I wasn't gonna say it, but I've been praying about it for a long time, but it's not...
Amen.
Okay, I'll take some.
You're actually on the agenda to talk about number twelve.
What Melanie was saying, it's not true, I was there at the end of it. And the look that she had in her face, it was, it was evil. I mean, she, like, she scared me, but if she was smart enough, all she had to do was just walk out of the door when she first got there, and then when I had a forum. No vote to be rejected. They had a forum, they had thirty people in there. They had a forum, so they had enough people for a meeting. She wanted to hold on a minute till the other two were there? All she had to, all she had to do was walk out. Everyone made the motion to keep the board as is. And, uh, no, yeah, and, and Nicole seconded the motion. Melanie went and made the motion to appoint Mr. Deal, although Mr. Deal wasn't there. But there was a motion in place, they had to put on a motion. So they voted on the motion. Eric and Nicole voted aye. And she voted nay. What she should have done, she should have just walked out.
But Sam, let me just say this, are you, you good, you got something else you want to say?
No, but what I'm saying is, all these accusations that she's making, they're not true.
Well, here, here's my problem, uh, is, just because you can do something, doesn't mean you should. So, and I don't think somebody should have to leave a, a meeting for lack of form to not, you know, be able to revert on a particular issue. But saying all that, and I thank you for your comments, uh, saying all that, I still believe, and have believed, even when it's been a level four, that these issues ought to be taken up within the individual boards first before they come to council. And that's the position I've always taken, so that's consistency here. So if you have nothing further to say, we will see if there's a motion, uh, and a second.
Thank you.
Is there a motion on number twelve?
Well...
Make the motion, Maria.
I have it on the agenda, so I'm gonna, you have to speak.
I love doing this.
No, I, I want to ask, I, I forgot, no, no, come here, come here. I want to ask Clarissa something, can I?
No, not yet, that's true. God, I love having authority over you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Petty politics of Freeport, everybody knows it, there's like three or four camps in five. I'm not a part of any of these camps. I am, for all intents and purposes, I'm trying to... I brought this, I brought this up to council, and put an aspect, aspect to be on this agenda because I have been hearing over and over again about the dysfunction of the leadership and the planning commission that is at the, uh, assistant Nicole Morelles. So, I decided to, uh, see how the elections would go and what would happen, and then to hear about the, uh, the miscarriage of democracy at the planning commission, that I put it on the agenda. And that said, I want to make the motion to remove Nicole Morelles from the planning board.
The old queen strikes again.
So hold on one second, we have a motion, and I'm assuming that's not a second.
No, sir.
All right, is there, is there a second on the, on Mr. Peña, Councilman, shoot, Councilman Peña's motion to remove Nicole Morelles, uh, from the Freeport Planning and Development Board?
I second.
We have a second from Councilman Mariah, now the further discussion, Mr. Grimich.
I just, I want to do some more pubes, but, um...
I just, I wanna make some more comments, but, um, Clarissa, can you tell us for the record who all's on that call, or who all's on line?
Uh, Williams, Vander, Lila.
I can't hear.
Can't hear.
Williams, Vander, Lila, D I E H O.
Lila, yeah, Lila.
Deal.
Yvette, Laura, Amanda, Patty, and Abette, and there's another number that goes to top of the queue.
Okay, thank you.
All right, very good. Mr. Bremich, you have anything else that you say?
No, sir.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, any further discussion at council? If not, all of the fair to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carried, uh, three to two. Thank you for the record. That brings us now to the work session, ladies and gentlemen. And the city council may deliberate and make any more, and eighty hours of this at the end of the work session. Mayor, uh, next, I'm gonna reserve mine. Well, Mr. Matorya, you're still here, I wanna make sure you're aware, that's why I had Mr. Petty bring up about the soccer field. So we do have plans on it, so we do have plans on the electricity, do as swift as we can.
Can I say something?
Here, you do a good brief to you right there.
I, I wanna be quick than I was before. Just remember, this is a quick fix, but I hear that you're planning, or the city's planning, to sell or to do something with that area. So whatever you do, make sure that we have a feel to play.
We believe in, in the kids playing soccer, and I love that area over there. There's another, there's another area I love, I love that area. But first, we're getting their power, so you know, we play at night and practice later. All right?
Well, tomorrow, the last game, and the closing ceremony is Thursday for the little ones, but physically going on. But, you know, I would like to invite you to come to those games. And so, real quick too, how many, how many kids are registered in the league right now? Right now, we have ninety. Ninety?
Ninety kids, that's fantastic, thank you.
And, and, and we lose a kid.
Okay, very good. I just want you to know that we're working on the rest of the issue. All right, next thing, Councilman Penney, further announcements, comments? Ladies and gentlemen, uh, former First Lady of Freeport.
I guess I'll call Mr. Mayor, I'll go.
I'll pick you up.
Hey, we're talking positive up here, we, we got a good conversation.
Very good, let's get through, very good. Councilman Penney.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of things here, uh, I know that I've been notified by constituents on Fifth Street that, uh, there's been a lot of trash that has not been picked up, about Fifth and Fourth, between Velasco and Navigation.
Ball picked up, or?
Um, debris, I think it's from the hurricane.
Okay. Remember this, there was a cuddle time.
I don't think they put it out there, because I was notified about three weeks ago about it.
Okay.
And I, I just kind of get the benefit of the doubt, the city would be taking care of it. Uh, when it was brought to my attention earlier this, uh, morning, um, I was reminded to make sure that I see. So I always try to make sure that I don't put every request.
Regardless of what you're thinking, all right. So that was, uh, just reminding that it was, uh, Navigation to Velasco?
Velasco and Navigation.
Okay, thank you.
Also, I wanna take the same, uh, also thank, uh, Mr. Kelsey for getting all the lights turned on, on, on broad and second. And I know that there are still some that need to be, uh, powered up, so I'm looking forward to those. And, uh, also, making sure that those additional strips at Velasco and Avenue Way are lit in lights. And I wanna also thank Mr. Petty, he's not here, and for that matter, your coordination with the county, to get Avenue Way, um, re-assulted, which needs the hooks. So, all of Freeport needs the benefit from all of its infrastructure. By all means, I'm glad that the hooks, which is one of the newer restaurants on the river, has a clear path for people to drive.
Yeah, well, since you're game, no, 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 no.
I, I say that, not double-headed, I mean that sincerely.
Oh, yeah, I took that way.
Right now, no, no audience participation. Now, I'm gonna tell you, that he has said positive things about hooks before to me, so I'm not discounting what he says about hooks right now. But no audience participation.
I wouldn't say do what your husband says, because I wouldn't do it, dare say.
Let me put it over, I mean that sincerely, that it is a positive for Freeport, to make sure that our streets are paved. And especially if we're trying to pronounce the various businesses that are trying to be successful, especially during this time of COVID, and I mean that. Don't take this as a...
Well, no, I, I wanna know why they stopped, you know, they didn't go away, is that because I own the hooks?
Uh, that's what Mr. Kelsey is.
That's all I know. I was just wondering.
I'm glad that wasn't very bad for it. But I get it.
I'm gonna keep you short and sweet. Um, fourteen hundred block of Tenth Street, we had a, a house fire about six weeks ago. That has been demolished, cleared out, leveled, and everything's good. Where do we stand on Velasco and Second Street, the house, and Tenth and Velasco? Well, on Tenth Street, it might have been years and a half ago.
Velasco and Second and?
And Tenth and Velasco.
Velasco and Second, right next to Democrat Corner, for all of you folks that have been here a while.
Uh, KCPS come up, I know that there are two additional houses that are currently scheduled to go to the Board of Adjustments in December, and then two more scheduled in January.
Yes, we have a meeting coming up in, in November also, December. Um, actually, this Friday, I went with the government board sponsor, and we raided the homes. And that's actually one of the very next ones, I believe. We're already processing the warrants to be able to get back in to do, but it's gonna be slightly postponed. And that will be my recommendation to the Board of Adjustments.
And it's, it's eleven hundred block of, uh, Second and Velasco, basically, it's not, it's not right on the corner, it's off the corner.
It's two hundred something. I wasn't calling the fire.
Yeah.
Right, and we're gonna be inspecting the house right next door at the same time, because there's concerns of structural dangers.
Big concerns.
Okay, does that, that sounds like it for a year and a half at least, I would say.
Yeah, I'm just gonna spend a long time in the fire marshal, because there was a higher peace when the president.
Um, since you're up here, um, I'm gonna give you a challenge. I get a lot of, uh, grief from citizens over, uh, getting permits, the process, the fact that the citizens are having to jump through hoops just to get a permit, whether it's to build a porch, or a fence, or what have you. We should be making it to where the citizens want to come to us and, and take care of us, give us their money, so they can beautify their home, beautify the city, and what have you. But it's exactly the opposite from what I'm hearing, and I do understand there's two sides to every story. Uh, but I encourage you to look into it, um, check and see, look at the process, see if there's anything you can do to make it better for the citizens.
To let you know, I've spoken with Mr. Kelsey about that, we're actually working on that. A lot of that's been lack of communication, there've been no handouts, no how-tos. Um, we've created standard operating procedures. That's actually a good idea, we can have, luckily, well, my clerk is a language, she can help us with that. But, uh, we've already started creating standard operating procedures, which are basically checklists, so they can come in and see right up front, this is exactly what they need. I know a lot of it, they would come in and bring a little bit, and they need a little bit more, so we're trying to alleviate that.
Yeah, and I'm being told, um, you know, they win this, this is my ultimate goal, well, you need this. So they go on, and they get that, and then they come back, and it may be a week or two before someone says, well, you need this.
That's why we're instituting the checklist, to get rid of that. And we're starting out, not a dozen of the ready, we're just, I'm tuning them, but they should be in process within the next thirty minutes.
Beautiful. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Mariah?
Also, I would like to bring an update on the trash, if I can, and I, and, so, actually, we've been made aware of the heavy trash situation. There were several piles that we had marked, but they got it coming up, and were not picked up. And so the citizens were frightened, in fact, Kathy emailed the general manager of Waste Management today, and they said they were gonna pick them up.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Mariah?
Uh, I'm good.
Councilman Bremich?
Waste connections for the record.
Sorry?
Waste connections.
Uh, their contract expires in?
No, 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 I'm just saying, I just, for the record, she contacted Waste Connections, not Waste Management.
Yes, Waste Management.
Yes.
Anything further, sir?
No, sir.
Uh, Mr. Bremich, uh, excuse me, Mr. Kelsey?
Uh, did you wanna announce that, uh?
Oh, wait, you're doing, that's my time? Wait a minute, I missed one for her. Oh, no, hold on a minute, no, sir, no, sir, no, sir. That lady right there cannot wait to get back and write on the front page of the paper tomorrow. I'm gonna defend myself at this circus, I guarantee it to you. I wanna say that I am embarrassed, the way this council's going, I don't agree with it. We went through this four or five years ago, and we got rid of it, and we're right back to where we were, and, you know, I, I just, I, I don't know what to do right now. I really don't know what to do. And I've seen the control that these two gentlemen are falling under, and, and the, the effect that they've had on people that's turned the city upside down. Do not let that happen again. I'm begging, I'm begging the citizens of Freeport to rise up, and don't let this city go backwards. Because you can mark my words here today, and I'll be gone in two and a half years, and I'll be living on my rent somewhere. But I'm gonna tell you right now, this city will [BLEEP] apart again if you allow what's happening here to happen. It will happen, mark my words, on whatever day this is, and whatever time this is. I'm telling you, wake up, city of Freeport, wake up and know what's going on with your EDC. I want on the agenda, I'm gonna give you plenty of notice, I wanna remove the entire board of EDC, I want it on the council agenda in two weeks. Now, I'm sure I'll lose, but by gosh, when I'm not here anymore, you can say that, Bremich, [BLEEP] schools, for the hard work that my wife and I have done. I can afford it, but no, I chose right here. Gina, I've, I've, I've always supported you in your organization, and you know that. I am Freeport, I always have been, I always will be. And Jeff, I've taken more, I, I mean, every single day. And, 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 and Mr. Mayor Barnett, you standing back there, he sued me and lost. The whole CCF was against me, Larry, you all against me, but in the end, nothing was, nothing came up, and I was still there, and I was still fighting for the city. I was in a bad position, but don't let it go back to that bad position, we took that out. And I'm telling you, if you love Freeport, do away with the politics, do away with the, get with your council people, let them explain to you what's going on. I want the stuff for the, for the Hispanic chamber, I want the, the, the centers for the children, and the computers, and all that great stuff, but I want it done right. I want it in the right place. I want it to succeed, because if you look back at what all Councilman Penney was talking about, it's all failed. Hundreds of thousands of dollars in that great picture out there, and we have the best people in place, but because of what's happening right here, because of the jealousy, and, you know, the Troy Bremiches are getting rich, and the city gaining this house, and all that stuff, that's all BS. I've worked hard for that, people that work hard, don't pull them down, get on board, support it for one, for once. But see through what's going on here. Tonight, set Freeport back, months and months, maybe years. And I'm just asking you guys to wake up, and realize, and, 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 and get on board with, with what your city council's doing.
Ms. Dancy, Ms. Dancy, we're, we're in work session right now. So, Ed, wait till after an executive session if you wanna speak again. Mr. Kelsey, uh, how do you follow that?
Well, I, I do have some good news to share with everyone, um, and that is that, uh, we got our first award of the six million dollars for the sewer. Expecting the second award this week, so we come to council the next week. To authorize the mayor to sign that grant, the grant grant review, to move forward, to find a way to reduce some stuff. I will warn you, though, that these are, this is that federal grant, these are the federal grant money that we talked about. And the first step will be environmental review, the envi- environmental assessment, the engineering, so it's not gonna be fast. But we do have the grant money, or excuse me, the bond money that the council approved last, that we argued before with on a number of, a number of projects, including Avenue.
Thank, uh, Cindy Kenny, and Jerry Kenny, and a number of the folks that got up there for the drunkard tree, and Leanne, and the groups, and, and any city employees. Thursday night, because I understand, how many children?
We have over five hundred.
Oh, my God.
Well, we, uh, I think we ran out of gift packs at around seven, maybe?
Yeah, and I, and there were probably at least another hundred that came through, that's not counting adults, so.
Yeah, that's just the children.
Yeah.
Uh, well, in excess of, uh, maybe fifteen, very close.
You know, folks, I, I think Troy had a point, he said, you need to talk to your council folks, we, we need to hear from you, the mayor needs to hear from you. Uh, and you need to ask us what our opinions are, uh, we try to give them to you from this, uh, podium up here, but also, we're citizens, so you can ask it there too. Um, I believe that, uh, Troy is passionate, uh, I believe, uh, when, uh, he says things that... But, know your facts, do your homework, and let's work together.